Oh, yeah.
They were trying to tell me about that announcement.
Gotcha, gotcha. Brown.
Brown? Okay, those in the lobby, please either have a seat or take it outside. Okay, this is the call to order. The amended agenda for the City of Dan Allen Community Redevelopment ATC meeting, commonly referred to as CRA. It is August 8th, 2022. It is 5:03 PM. Let everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a tradition, Dan Allen, is there anyone that would like to come to the podium and give us a prayer or some words of advice and wisdom before we get started? Yes, sir. All right, bow your heads, let's pray.
Hallelujah, Lord, we just thank you so much for this time, God. We thank you for this meeting, Lord. We thank you for just coming together as a city. God, just pray for unity. God, pray for peace, Lord. God, just pray that your will be done here above all else, God. Love you and praise you in your name. Amen.
Thank you so much. All right, we just get started. Ms. Odom, roll call.
Mayor White.
Present.
Lieutenant H. R.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Councilwoman King is absent tonight. Councilwoman Cabbage.
Present.
Jan Smith, Science Officer.
Here.
Georgina Seig, Community Development Manager.
Here.
Troy Slavery, Public Works Manager.
Here.
Julie Dadowski, Records Court.
Here.
Chief McQuaid is also absent tonight. Is Lieutenant Yawkes here? City Attorney Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website, Seagull Bulletin Board, on Wednesday, October 3rd, and amended on August 4th to add backup to Agenda Item Number 1.
Okay, before we get started, some house rules. This is a good time right now if you have a beeping device, a phone, cellphone, to turn it off. If you would like to speak, if you have signed up, you will be asked to speak first in line. If you haven't signed up, you will still be asked, you will be given an opportunity to speak once those that have signed up conclude their talk. If you do decide you want to speak, and we hope you do, we do limit it to three minutes, and we do ask that you give your name and address for the public record. Please speak directly into the mic, speak clearly and loudly. This is recorded, this is documented public information, and quite amazingly, people do listen to these live on Zoom. I'm quite surprised how many people do listen, and I can tell by the comments I get after the meeting. So, with that said, we start off with consent agenda, which is the minutes and a few other things. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm looking at consent agenda to be approved as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both, none, passes four, zero. Now, we will do the regular agenda, item number two, if you're following, for the fiscal year 2021-2022, third quarter, TIFC CRA budget update. So, Ms. Odom, who is going to lead us on that?
That's going to be Jan.
Okay, Ms. Smith?
Oh, okay, thank you. This is the third quarter, um, year-end, year-end budget update. What you have on the screen before you are the revenues and expenditures. We'll go over the revenues first.
Annie, can you make it bigger?
Oh, sure, she can load that up.
I was looking for my little...
Yeah, how about, how about get the other lights over there, too? Very good.
I lost my finger somehow.
Isn't it too little?
Is it? No, that's...
And we have it on our work agenda though. So, I'll have it where it says "you" Maddie, and then it'll give you...
Oh, yeah, I lost my little Zoom thing. There we go. Sorry, guys. Let's just see it. Control's called. And we're really going to look at the next to last column.
Yeah, that's good right there.
Okay. All right. What I'm projecting revenues to come in at is $600,482. It's actually a decrease of about $24,000 due to the cancellation of the 125-year anniversary park project. I have reduced the transfers from reserve. But other than that, everything is coming in pretty much as budgeted. Taxes came in a dollar difference than budget, actually a dollar more, and a little bit of interest on this. And that's it for the revenues unless there are any questions. CRA revenues are pretty cut and dry, it's taxes and a little bit of interest earnings. Moving on to expenditures, I have adjusted these based on discussions, you know, at other county workshops. I'm projecting expenditures to come in at about $500,000 or an overall decrease of about $124,000. This is primarily attributed to the cancellation of the 125 park. If you look at line 107, labeled capital, and the carryforward of the Blue Run Park to next year's budget. For grants, since there won't be any more grants given out for the remainder of the year, I've decreased it to what has already been approved, and the $63,740 is being carried over to next year. So, overall decrease in expenditures of almost $124,000. What that means in total is about $99,000, $100,000 will go back into reserve at the end of this year. Are there any questions?
No.
Yes, I smear.
Just for clarification, so we'll take that $63,740 and we will add that into the 2022, 2023 budget, correct?
Yes.
For the grants, and how much extra money are we going to be adding to that?
I don't believe there's anything more that Georgina has included. I don't have the figure in front of me.
Okay.
I think that's all she budgeted for next year. And, and the budget can be amended at any time during the year if there's a need to increase that for next year.
Okay. And the $59,000 decrease due to the restroom project?
The $12,000 restroom project and the $47,000 125-year project.
Okay, so that'll just go into whenever we hand over the check to Marion County?
Actually, the restroom project is increased to a total of $175,000.
Right, but that'll be part of it.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, I'm just making sure I'm doing my math right.
Yes. Any more questions?
Other comments?
So, the, just for everybody to understand, we'll probably get out of the $5,000 grants that we have available for Ms. Burke's CRA district, that's about 12.74 grants. I don't know how we're going to get that .74 in there, but anything can be added. Thank you. That kind of drives me nuts. All right, thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Cabbage, you usually have lots of questions on subjects like this.
I have no questions.
No questions? I think it's pretty straightforward, Ms. Smith.
All right. Now, the next schedule that I want to show you is the spending schedule. This is basically the projects that have been budgeted, appropriated over the, over several years. Now, I have narrowed this down because there have been complaints that these schedules and numbers are very small and people can't see it. I've narrowed it down just to last year and the current year. Everything is color-coded. The gray means it's basically we've had this ongoing for three years. So, if you look at line 11, Blue Run Park Restrooms, we started with $12,000, we budgeted this $12,000. If you go to the very last column, you'll see a zero because we're not going to spend the $12,000 this year, it's carried over to next year. So, I have taken it out of the projected expenditures. The same thing with line number 12 for the 125 park. We budgeted $47,507, we carried it forward. I'm calling it a zero expense for the remainder of the year because that project was canceled. The line number 15, West Penn Streetsgate Phase 2, we budgeted $50,000. Now, keep in mind, this is as of June, and I hadn't heard that we weren't going to do anything else with this project, so I projected that we would spend $50,000. If we don't, it just stays in the reserve. The same thing with the Ernie Mills Beautification Project. As of June, it was still ongoing, so I did project $10,000. In my opinion, we probably aren't going to be doing much, if anything else, with these projects, the remainder of the year, but that's for another presentation. The Wayfinding Sign, as of June, it was still, you know, kind of anticipated a $226,000 project, even though it was talked about it should come in less. I did project our budget. Parking enhancements, that had decreased because of the Wayfinding Sign project. If you notice, originally Wayfinding Signs was budgeted at $25,000. When the whole project was presented, that increased the dollar amount, so there was just a transfer between line numbers. You didn't have to do a budget amendment. So, and this ties to the other schedule I just presented. Expenses, if you look at line 24, total projected expenses, $500,780. If you scroll down a little more, you'll see where we have obligated $303,760 for the DOT Multimodal Project that apparently is going forward, hopefully within the next year. We have budgeted to fully fund this next year for $350,000 per the interlocal agreement with Marion County. So, this is just a recap of projects. You'll see we've got a lot, a lot of different projects listed than in prior years that were dollars assigned to it, which I can provide at any time if you'd like to see those prior year items. But this is just to kind of keep track of what's happened and what's happening with CRA. Are there any questions?
Yes, a question I would have is with this budget as it is presented, if council would decide to do things other than what we're seeing right there, for instance, not spend so much on a certain item, what happens with that money that we don't spend? Can it be used to plug it in to do another project or does it automatically go into reserve?
You can go ahead and reassign it in that current year, reappropriate it, I should say, in that current year if you wish, or if it's not spent, it just stays in the bank because this is all money in the bank at this point.
So, so for instance, I think you've answered the question. I think the big number that pops for anyone who watches this budget is the $225,000 for Wayfinding Signs. What we're trying to achieve right now is find a way to accomplish that goal at a much better figure. So, let's say we say $75,000. So, that $75,000 could be assigned to another project if we wanted to, or we could just put it in reserve for a future day.
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha. So, there's no commitment? I mean, this is what our plan is, but council still has the, can pivot and, and do as we think we need to do as these things come up?
Yes, your budget is a living, breathing document that changes.
Okay.
Daily.
Thank you, got it.
Are there any other questions? The last schedule I want to show you are the reserves. As of June 30, unrestricted TIF reserve, $596,445, and that's in the third column. And then you'll see the multimodal bike path obligation out of the reserve of $303,760. So, as of June 30th, TIF had $900,205.88. And typically, all this does for the remainder of the year is decrease because then all the revenue is received as of December 31st, and then expenditures just go through the reserves for the remainder of the year. And that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? I have one. On the amount of money that's earmarked for the multimode trail, which is over $300,000, correct?
Yes.
Is that money that's predicted for next year, or is that money that's being carried over? And if that money is spent, does that pretty much spend the CRA money for that year on that one singular project?
Well, no, you have more funds available to you. That's one project, just like the Wayfinding Signs. So, if, now, if not appropriated for next year, I haven't been told that the project would definitely move forward. It's earmarked, but not budgeted. So, what would happen is if we get word that that project is going to move forward, we'll go ahead and do a budget amendment, bring it into the budget as a project, and then wait until we get invoiced, but I'm told to send one to DOT or Marion County, whoever we want.
So, I guess my question, Jan, would be that $300,000 plus seems to be the amount of money we normally get per year for CRA.
Just now.
Something on two, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And, you know, I'm kind of loose with the numbers. So, I guess my question is, if the project does go forward and we do step up, which we surely would, that pretty much commits our CRA money for that year to that one project if it works out that way.
But not everything you have to spend.
And we have more money than that in reserves, huh?
Oh, yes. I mean, your budget for next year, I want to say is in the $600,000 range.
Okay.
So, you have $600,000 that you plan on spending on anything, on everything besides that multimodal, multimodal project. So, you still have in your TIF fund approximately $900,000.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want to have Georgina be put in a position that for one year, she's pretty much... Georgina?
No.
There's nothing for you for an entire year where you're already committed.
Um, the only advice I've given in speaking with Georgina, especially since, you know, this is her first real budget year, is that at least approximately $50,000 value remains at the end of every fiscal year to get us through till December. Because you still have salaries, you still have electricity for the welcome signs, there's still some fixed operating expenses that have to come out of TIF. So, unless we, you know, would come to council and borrow funds from the general fund, which you really don't want to do, but for the most part, we never spend everything. That is budgeted.
Okay, I'm glad. Everybody else good? All right. Now, we move to item number three. Can we have the lights back on? Public comment? Anyone? Ms. Odom, has anyone signed up to speak?
Uh, yes, for Kathy Dunn.
Kathy Dunn, 1138 6 Hendrick Drive. I'm confused about the CRA fund because I thought the monies had to be spent in the CRA area, not, and if Blue Run Park is a CRA area? Okay, good, thank you for correcting me. Our fund, CRA fund, was established, best I can figure out, in 1993, and it was established, the purpose was to renovate older downtown residential areas. And the statute said that five to seven members of CRA board, not all coming from residents of Dan Allen, should be overseeing this money. And as you know, I've been kind of, for a long time, feeling that there was not enough oversight from our city council and our citizens for this expenditure of this money. All expenditures, and I've only become interested in it in networking with other cities and finding out what they're doing, and all expenditures from the CRA fund must be driven by a master community redevelopment plan, which must be updated every three to five years. So, this was an example of one of those plans by Wachula, the city of Wachula, Florida. And this, it doesn't even include their appendix. So, it's quite extensive, and it guides our expenditures. And as I see, this is what we have not done, and if we have it, it is not on our website, and it must be published on our website. The other thing is, if we've had this fund since 1993 and the purpose was to decrease light, I don't see that it's been that effective. So, that's just my opinion as a citizen that lives here. Jan?
We did not receive the proper CRA dollars until the year 2000.
Okay, I was wrong. I just tried to decipher. I tried to go on the website and decipher where this came from because I have a master plan that was kind of from 1993, but it's just as a regular citizen, trying to go back and recreate what we, what happened. And then, for many years, townhouses and lawmakers have tried to provide oversight to prevent funds from going to pet projects developed by the staff and councils. So, they passed HB 9, and I may be wrong about this, this is just what I gleaned from research, in 2019, passed, was passed, HB 9, to ensure oversight from CRA funds. And by doing that bill, they provided a lot of stipulations for a town that has a CRA fund, and if we don't do it, we're in danger of losing that fund because we are diverting tax money. There's a thing called the Florida Redevelopment Association, which I found out about, and we really should consider going to their conference in Daytona Beach on October 12th to 14th. I'm going to go, and I'll give anybody a ride that wants to go. The other thing is, I don't think that our...
We, we have to, you can speak again, just a second.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak here? Yes? This is to be focused on the CRA, as this meeting is called.
Delivered 9552 Southwest 192nd Court, Dan Allen. One of the things I wanted to bring up was the Run Park restroom, which I think Chairman Zalik was very helpful in getting us the extra $275,000 so we could complete that project, which has been in the management plan since 2008, and we've been trying very hard. We've applied for three or four different grants to try to get funding, and we have been unsuccessful. And I know that we're short, even with the money from Marion County, we are not going to have enough money to do the restroom. And I was hoping that we would have CRA money. Now, I don't know where the city is with respect to funding that shortfall at this point, but CRA is a, is a one spot where there is funding in there that could be used for that. And just want to remind you that I was here when we rewrote the CRA plan, which I looked at, and there was a question about, well, the Blue Run infrastructure was not in the plan, but now it is in the plan. The plan was rewritten so that the restroom and the shelter are specifically identified now in the CRA plan. So, there's not an issue with that. Also, Blue Run Park is in the district, it is in the CRA district, so it would be a logical expenditure to make up that shortfall for CRA money if you do have a surplus. I'm not sure where you are, but I just want to make that point, that we are still short, as you know, and we want to get the restroom done as soon as we can. I think we've had enough use of porta potties, and the use of the park is increasing almost by the day. The parking lot was filled again today, which it is almost every day now, but I just want to bring that up. Thank you very much.
Anyone else signed up? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Yes.
Julianne Mendel, 71894 East Blue Cove Drive. I'm just wondering, Jan, if you could speak real quick, number 37, property acquisition or development of public parking? I'm just curious as to what that line items spell.
The statute requires all CRA monies to be either appropriated, budgeted, or obligated. Obligated means earmarked. So, when there's a surplus and we don't have any specific projects, that's kind of the title that was used. It doesn't have to be used for that, it's just the excess CRA funds.
Okay, because examples like parking at a new police facility that...
It just works, it doesn't mean it will be spent on that. But when you, and when you don't have specific projects, it's like, okay, we have to come up with a title.
Right.
So, that may not, you know, be the best title, but when this past budget was, was prepared, that's kind of what it was marked into.
I hear you.
Those monies would have to be, if they, in order to be spent, we have to do a budget and to bring them into the current year budget.
Excellent, yes, seeing those five words as the example was concerning to me. So, maybe we can revisit that as something more of a more general example. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone in attendance that would like to speak?
CRA.
It's got to be on the CRA district, because they need CRA. When we go to the next meeting, within a minute or two, you can speak down to the top. CRA? Okay, Tim, go ahead.
Tim Henske, 12140 Maple Street. Well, my question is, on the CRA community redevelopment, is there a, is there a master plan or something like that? Because I look at this like I would look at any project. You start with an objective goal, then you create a plan, then you schedule that plan, and then you create a budget after that. And I could be wrong, but it seems like over the years, you've just kind of been doing things kind of hodgepodge, little of this, little of that, but as Kathy mentioned, we're really not seeing any results based on, on that. So, my question is, is there a plan or...
Yes, there is a CRA plan. That's what was developed. It began in 1993 and has been amended several times over the years. And the only way that we can spend the CRA money is if it's identified in that plan, the projects that we...
Where can we see that plan at?
Georgina's out, the website?
Awesome. Should it be on the website? So, I mean, it's a lot of dollars.
The plan is very generic. Initially, I believe there were some dollar amounts, but then the plans, which are definitely no longer applicable.
Not so much the dollar amounts, but the plan itself?
The plan itself. I'd have to defer to Georgina as manager of CRA.
Well, I'd have to, I would have to research into that, I haven't...
Okay.
Ms. Odom, let me interject. Would there...
Thank you.
Would there be any, any encumbrance or any difficulty to put the plan that we have on our website so the public could read it? I think that's a very legitimate question. Can you do that? Thank you for the suggestion. Consider it done. If it's not done, call man.
Mayor White? I have a comment or some input, and that is, rather than just go ahead and post that CRA plan, could we, our next CRA meeting, take a look at it and see where it needs to be amended and updated and revised and whatever? What's the point of posting a plan that is out of date and, as you said, the expenditures are no longer applicable?
The projects still...
The projects are still on, yes.
Yes, such, such as the parking lot project that was recently finished out over Ernie Mills.
Right.
That was identified as a point.
Right.
So, and like I said, it has been amended over the... So, and like I said, it has been amended over the years. That's kind of out of my purview as far as the plan goes. And I would need to defer to Georgina's department for a discussion of that plan.
Okay, could we do that?
I don't see why not.
Thank you.
Ms. Cabbage, I think that's an excellent suggestion. I think possibly at our next CRA meeting, schedule some extra time so we can discuss some of those items.
And at that meeting, I won't be giving a financial update anyway because it's year end and we have too many items that we have to process. A year end, and we have financials for you.
Okay. So just anticipate that council's gonna be taking a look at this within the next few, three months. And let's get our ducks in a row. Anyone else in attendance that would like to speak? Soon as we finish with this, we will segue right into our general meeting. Anyone else that would like to speak? The CRA. Please note, everyone has been asked. Anyone on Zoom, Ms. Odom, that would like to speak?
No.
Okay, I believe that concludes this meeting.
I have the motion said.
Adjourned. We have a second. Ms. Williams, all in favor?
Aye.
It's adjourned. Okay, what we're gonna do is now we're gonna go straight ahead and hop straight ahead into our regular city council meeting. So this is a call to order.
We need one more, please. We gotta switch zones and everything. Just give us a second.
This meeting was a short CRA meeting, which is separate from our general meeting. So I catch you all so quietly and nicely in seats. I tried to slip right into the second meeting, but I didn't quite pull it off. Everybody had a little break, so here we go. So, call to order. The amended agenda for the City of Dunellen City Council meeting, August 8th, 2022, 5:30 PM. Would y'all rise collectively?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone in the audience who has, is the council in Dunellen, that would like to say a prayer or some encouraging words before we get started?
Justin said he needs just a minute. He needs a pause for just a minute. My technology is wonderful. As long as it works.
It just sounded a little bit like-
Oh, I've seen this happen in Marion County.
Yes, ma'am. Just a little longer, Ron, what's that?
I nominate Mr. Zalik to give a prayer.
You got it.
Hang on. Everybody member of this week, that school is starting. So please, if you're driving anywhere in the mornings or coming home in the afternoons, watch those school buses. And all those kiddies out there too early in the morning, have a stand at school buses. You'll get that in a few other years.
He just had it, our attorney just had it. Three months ago?
Four months.
He's so cute, he doesn't know all the puns.
For those of you that are attending, we do have a couple of our leading governmental officials in Marion County with us. As you know, Commissioner Zalik is here, and he's gonna speak. He is the chair for the county commissioners. And we have LaShaper, who is the director of the tourist bureau. And she's gonna make a presentation. So we're very excited about this. If you like what Commissioner Zalik says, and he really gives the bells and whistles going, you'll have a second chance to listen to him. Because when you finish this interview, he's going to the First Baptist Church.
Is he just random?
Oh. And then Senator Perry, I understand, are gonna give a presentation there at 7:00 PM. Okay, we're ready for a prayer. Does anyone want to give a prayer?
Yes, the nominated people, if you don't mind. Father, we love you, we thank you for your guidance and your wisdom. We ask that you would continue to bless Marion County and, of course, this great city of Dunellen. We ask you to fill us with your spirit as we deliberate, but mostly as the mayor and the council deliberates about the businesses in Dunellen. That you would give them strength and guidance. And Father, that you would also continue to protect those, both abroad and right here at home, that protect us and give us strength in all of our first responders, keep them safe. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, everyone have a seat. Okay, the solo home call.
Mayor White?
Present.
Vice Mayor Yanis, here. Captain Lee, here. Captain Lee, here. Captain Lee, here. Vice Director, here.
Here.
Janet Smith, here. She is here. Georgina Seid, community development manager.
Yeah.
Phil Zaski, records clerk.
Yeah.
Jacob Quag, is absent. Lieutenant Dogg.
Here.
Adrienne, city attorney.
Yes, sir.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and sent by a board on Thursday, April 4th, and amended on August 8th by guest speaker Chairman Carl Stalak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zalik. Before we get to Commissioner Zalik, just over some house speaking. We get to public comment, which will be immediately after Commissioner Zalik's presentation. If you sign up in our lobby there, you will be asked or allowed to speak first. If you have not signed up, but still would like to speak, you will be allowed to before we go into the agenda. If you do speak, we do- Live at you to three minutes. We ask that you give your name and address. This call recorded and becomes public record permanently. There are people that are listening to this on Zoom. And everything that is said can be repeated in the future. One thing this council really pushes is respect. We promise to respect you in return. We ask that you respect us, we are public servants. Just most deep know those that serve on this council are doing it as volunteers. So we are putting our time into this because this is something that we care about. So with that said, it is our great pleasure to have invited and accepted a chairman, Commissioner Marion County, Carlos Fallez, officer.
Thank you, Mr. Fallez. Good evening, Mayor, distinguished councilmen, members. It's great to be with you. I'm so grateful for the opportunity. And thank you for the team that you have here at Dunellen that continues to make the city work every single day. And they do a great job out there. Hear good things, call the council. Thank you for what you guys do and really making this community a wonderful place to live. So, Mayor, you gave me a few talking points that you'd like to hit. Because whenever you talk with a mayor, you know there's a couple of things on his mind. And you can't get a word in wise until he gets to talk about those three things. So, of course, we're all celebrating, I think, in Marion County and the surrounding areas about the DOT letter that came through here this last week in regards to the poll room, right? Marion County, obviously, as I've put before, didn't like any of the routes. Obviously, DOT didn't even like all the routes. So that's a good way to start off. And they're gonna focus on I-75. And Marion County definitely wants to stay at the table for I-75. The reality is, is as a logistics hub that we've just become, and Florida will continue to become, this significant logistics as it distributes to now 22 million, it'll be 23 million, right, people around the state of Florida. It becomes imperative to have not only a first-class community, but first-class infrastructure to go with it, right? And so as we expand and work with DOT and have all of our partners, and every city in our community needs to be a part of the conversation with how does I-75 get expanded? What are the elements that make that work? And how do we come together to make that an even better experience for not only the people that live here in Marion County, but the people that are coming through? So we want to make sure that they can do that easily. And we don't have, you know, shutdowns of I-75. It's something that they have to work on. They have to, you know, you can't have such a major road and then one lane of it go down and then continue to back up for, you know, for hours and hours and hours, right? And I think every, I mean, I know it's less than every couple of weeks, the road is shut down in certain parts between the turnpike and up to I-10. So it's gonna be a big challenge for them. And we look forward to being at that. And hopefully, you guys will also join us in making sure that I-75 becomes the roadway that our community needs. The next point, of course, is our pastor. Heard about it already when I walked in the door. So, this is great, and the gentleman is right. The porta-potty's gotta go. So thank you, Mayor White, and your leadership for continuing to help us do that. The update that I have, and I know, Mayor, every time we get together, you email me with another spreadsheet of numbers. So I think we'll be right there. But, so Marion County and FGUA have negotiated the fees for construction, both the water and wastewater services for the restroom. The agreement is currently at the county attorney's office and will be released this week. So we will get the actual agreement documentation out of the county attorney's office this week. There's only two minor details just to be taken care of. Estimated cost for the water wastewater service, including portable water supply and lift station, forced main connections, is at $221,215. FGUA and US Water Services are partners in this project and have solidified a $50,000 contribution to the project as well. That was great news. Marion County will be paying $171,215 to ensure that this aspect of the project is completed promptly. Marion County's total financial commitment toward the overall project is right around $413,981. It's an expensive restroom. Marion County's total financial commitment overall, again, is almost a half a million dollars. After the water and wastewater project is complete, Marion County's balanced funding should be right around $242,766. And Marion County is ready to get started with the utility construction. As soon as the agreement is finalized, FGUA and US Waters are cleared to mobilize. So after this week, it'll go back to them. I'm sure it'll take a couple of days, and they'll be ready to mobilize. So that product is under, can we all say underway? Is that almost? I mean, it's gonna be really good. And I'm sure that, Mayor White, if you don't mind, send me a picture as soon as you start seeing them break the ground. I love the updates and the new apron out there, that's great. Also, I think one of the great things that has come out over the years is that Marion County and Dunellen's working relationship continues to get better. And I really appreciate that, and I appreciate councils always doing that. Valerie, all your hard work on so many boards that you and I have served on, thank you. We've always been willing to listen and continue to make these projects happen. The county provides, I thought it was just interesting to know that although we provide all the maintenance on CR 484 in Dunellen, that lets the city have the authority for the railways. And so thank you for taking care of that aspect of it and making our partnership even stronger and our roadways even safer. The county handles the city of Dunellen's water management plan for them. And so we continue to use both of our resources to mine so the taxpayers win in the end. And in recent years, we have partnered with the city of Dunellen to ensure their citizens are getting fire rescue. Although it was a very expensive process for Marion County, because it, of course, doesn't fit into our perfect five-mile rings that we like to put stations and those things on, I think that that endeavor over the last few years has really shown to make a safer community. And that has really paid off huge dividends. And I hope that you're happy with that and that agreement. And we continue to work together on other things. So, Mayor White, if there are other items that you'd like to address as well, but I came with those few things to just address. Thank you for your commitment, and we look forward to making our community stronger together.
Well, I do have one other item maybe you can comment on.
Sure.
That we are really excited about. You know, and I know because I've heard you speak and I've seen you attend the opening of the tunnel on the 24th and 41st. Now, we're really excited that the Witlakuchi Trail, the Wildlife Corridor, it's all coming through into Dunellen. We're really excited about that. Now, what we're equally excited about, along with the restroom project, is it is our understanding that the funding for the pedestrian bridge over the Rainbow River is in play, along with some improvements on Pennsylvania to create a bike trail, which, again, is an extension of all this stuff. And we're really excited about that. And I know you're involved with it, and I know you're keeping your eye on it. And it's, just so you know, what the city's plan is for the future is on the Witlakuchi River, there's 40 acres there that is part of the Florida Forever program. Now, we're pushing hard to get that captured, where we'll actually have a dual park on both ends of the city, one on the Witlakuchi, Blue Run Park, with a connecting bike trail that connects everything. That would be a transformational moment.
Sounds wonderful.
For Dunellen. So, you know, when push comes to shove, you know, a little help from the county, you know, when we try to get some of these things done, it would be really helpful.
Sure.
It's a big task for us. And just to say to you is, we're really proud of this little city. It is my understanding, talking to Jan Smith, our finance director, that our revenue per year is around 3.5 million that comes into the city. Plus, we have 3.5 million of new revenue, plus the reserves. Can you imagine running a city on that kind of money with the police department? So I look at us being the example of how we get a lot done with not a lot of money. And we, and as you can see, this is not unusual to have a council meeting, to have a packed house. People are very engaged here. And they're really into it. And one last thing I'm just gonna say to you is, you, as much as anybody, should get credit or acknowledgement for putting together the agreement for the restroom and the weather pavilion. I had gone to the commission a couple of times, pleaded my case. And I really didn't feel I was getting too far. And you reached out and you said, wait a second, Mayor, I wanna hear what you have to say. I wanna understand this. And you and I had a meeting, and you broke it down, and it got into play. And there's no doubt in my mind, without your influence and push, this would not have happened. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words, but the truth is, we got a great team on our side. And we've been really fortunate with the great players. And I'm glad that if I did have anything to do it, I could get it over the goal line. And we could all score a touchdown. You know, we really, you know, Mayor, it's so interesting that we were able to come so far when you did. And I remember having that conversation with you, and you felt like, man, you're just- I know how, trust me, I know how that feels. Every time I go to Tallahassee, I feel the same way sometimes, you know, where you feel you're kind of hitting your head up against the wall.
I think I said I felt like a vacuum, I've sold a vacuum cleaner to someone who didn't want a vacuum, right?
Yeah. They stopped selling those curvies a long time ago. But, you know, and then you get somebody that's on your side, and we can together push it over the finish line. And I appreciate that. You made this happen just as much as anybody else through your persistence and tenacity for the city of Dunellen. And I'm just glad I could come alongside and bring it home. So we're gonna see this thing come up here shortly. And as you said, in regards to both those parks, I know that we'll have to deal with Tallahassee on that. We just came out with our legislative priorities. If there's something that the city of Dunellen, in regards to that, you'll be looking for funding from Tallahassee, or you and I wanna have a meeting to get ahead of that with Representative Harding. Please let me know, we'll set that up. And we can even, we have in the past, when Okala, maybe CF, and other folks in our community have had joint initiatives with us that they were looking for funding, where we could put our lobbyists and our teams for work for you in Tallahassee as well. So if you need that, please let us know. And I'll be more than happy to make those things happen as well. So, Mayor?
Any comments from the council?
I've just always enjoyed working with you. And I'm glad that we finally got the bike path, the little crossing over the bridge.
Yes.
Long, long, long.
We've still got lots more work to do, so.
Thank you.
And you did get a lot of notice and credit for taking your position, questioning strongly the routes on the turnpike.
Yes, sir.
People know that was a three to two vote. People know who the two were, and people know who the three were.
Yeah.
And you were pushing to have language that, I think, mimicked emcores to a certain extent. And it didn't happen, but you were on the right side of history, for sure. side of history, for sure. And as it has turned out, it shows you were, right?
Yes, sir. I, I mean, you know, people have asked me, why, why didn't you sign the no build, or why didn't you do these things? It's because I'm part of the board, as you guys know, right? It's, it's, you, you have to be part of that team. And so I didn't feel, for, for me, it was right to sign something where, you know, I was on the wrong side of a three-two vote. But at the end of the day, I think, you know, being at the table, meeting with the secretary of both the turnpike and of DOT, they heard our voices loud and clear. And I know everybody's not gonna know that, because those are conversations we have face to face. But I promise you one thing, is Marion County is gonna be at the table, and we're gonna make sure that these things work, and our infrastructure gets stronger because of these conversations, and because of this debate, and because of the great citizens of our community that rose up, it, it's going to make our community better, and people are gonna know when they come through here, or if they wanna come through here, that they're gonna have to think twice about that.
Well, even though you were on the minority vote, you, you were on the right side of the vote, that's what I'm saying. You, you were, you were fighting and questioning the four corridors, you and Commissioner Bryant.
Yeah.
And it was noted, and everyone knows that, too.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right, good.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you so much for coming. One thing we skipped over when, when we went to Commissioners Alec was the, does the council have any comments regarding the agenda?
I would like to go ahead and ask that we remove the Agenda Item Number Two from the consent agenda, please.
Any, any other comments on the, I, I actually want to discuss a little bit more, Item Number Three, so I want that removed from the consent agenda. All right, so what's left on the consent agenda is the City Council Minutes, which is Number One.
Sorry, sorry.
And the, Number Four.
Are we looking for public comment?
Yeah. Okay, let me get back in order. Okay, right now, where we're at, if you have an agenda in front of you on Page Two, right at the top, public comments on non-agenda items, what this is, is if it is on the agenda, you will be able to speak to it when the agenda item comes up. So if you have a comment on anything that it's not on the agenda, this is the time to do it. So.
My name is Barbara Ocasio, and I live at 10258 North Garder Way, Citrus Springs. I'm about a mile and a half borderline of your wonderful county and Citrus County, and I'm here just to remind everybody what pause really means. From the Britannia, the Britannia dictionary, definition, a temporary stop, a period of time in which something is stopped before it starts again. This turnpike is a temporary stop, and it's also been told by a few politicians, they still want that, that corridor rammed right through us from east to west, so we really need to keep guard, it's not over. Thank you.
Anyone else signed up?
Hi. Jasmine Lovenga, 14051 Southeast Eighth Street, Williston, Florida. And as you know, I've been going to all four counties with this, I've been in front of everybody, and I'm following up with Barbie, said that people need to remember, yes, we scored on this, okay? This is wonderful, this pause, but also keep in mind, people, you know, like, pause on your remote when you're watching the DVD and go to the bathroom, it's not stopped. And so they may have paused, but we can't, we can't pause. We need to stay vigilant on this, we need it to be stopped dead, period, not just paused, because, you know, FDOT, they're, they're spinning, they weren't, they weren't expecting her used to the four counties stood together like we did, and we finally got their attention. And it was major, you know, we backed the beast up a little bit, okay? But we didn't stop it, and they made it very clear, this is just a pause. And so it's wonderful, yes, but don't stop, people, we are not stopping, we need to continue to fight this, because it, it is what it is, and we don't need, need the major coast and, and what's left of rural Florida destroyed. And, and I think what helps stop them too, 'cause there's a lot of issues, like the Sable Pipeline being finned up in roles, it could be potential explosives, the Southwest Florida Management District saying, no, we don't wanna do this, and you've got all the royal issues, and there's many, 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 there's like thousands of reasons that are very valid, that it should be a stop, but we're on pause, people, it's election. And the other thing is that I've learned from going to all these counties and watching these people in the power seats, I've never done this before, I've never been involved, but now I know how important it is for us to find out who we're gonna put in those seats, who supported and wants the toll roads, and who hasn't, who really is representing the people, us. We need to ask questions, we need to confront them, we need to find out and, and try to put better people in these seats that, that can, can work for the people, not just the developers, because sadly, not all, but the majority of them, we're definitely representing developers in this manner, very clearly. And so, you know, we need to have a shift of tides, and they need to be aware, too, that we're watching them, and, and we want people who are gonna fight for us, not the developers. And so I thank you all, because we all did this together, especially standing up in the four counties, and, and not saying, put it over in their yard, we said, no, the offer is ours, you can't divide it up with Maggie Markner Lines, it's for all of us, and we, we've got, and we've got to feed for the wildlife and all the rest, we've got to save it for everybody together. And I'm very proud of all of us that stood at this and fought, and, but we're not done. We're, you know, they might be on pause, but they're catching their breath, but now, don't take down your signs, don't stop wearing your buttons or fliers or your bumper stickers, because we need to remind them, this is still how it has to be. And thank you all very much.
And it is noted, I have watched you over the last several months, your tireless, non-stopping effort on this cause, it's been pretty truly remarkable. I know there's others, but it seems like every time you turn around, you're at every event, every function, all over the internet, doing everything you can, so congratulations to you. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak?
I have Dr. Paul John Reinhardt.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah. I, I actually enjoy this board, it's a little black, the council, right? So Paul John Reinhardt, address 325 South Jefferson Street, Beverly Hills, Florida, resident there for 44 years. And I really enjoy this board, because it's like reflective of my background. What I wanted to say was that my, my mom was the lifelong, you know, Republican, so was my granddad, he got the job as a Deputy U.S. Marshal from the Republican Party in New York State. My, my dad was a Harry Truman Democrat, he was a tough guy, he told me not to give up on anything. And what I feel is something I'm putting on the public record, I saw some inadequacies and improprieties in my own party, and I'm studying it, I'm planning on filing a federal elections complaint, and the reason I'm here, it didn't happen in this area, but I felt it was a way of getting it on the public record. Some of my supporters were threatened, and I just do not like that, I'm outspoken, okay? I grew up in a New York City housing project with my dad and my mom from the two different parties, it was quite interesting, people joked to me that they had no idea it was from a, a, a mixed marriage. So, but the thing is, that I'm a tough guy, okay? When someone steps on someone they think is small, and someone is very big, sometimes maybe they will break their foot, and this is the situation at hand, okay? I do not succumb to pressures, like I said, grew up in a high crime area, lucky my dad came home at night, so it shouldn't be threatening my friends in the campaign, they, they actually had no reason to, very wealthy people, they could look at my campaign account, you know, this is my third time around, people are getting frustrated that I keep coming back, three, three races against very powerful incumbents, I'm just not gonna tolerate it. And that's all I have to say, so they should cease and desist immediately. Thank you.
When is the primary, sir?
Oh, the primary is August 23rd, and it's an open primary. That's what I like, my dad and mom love it, a Republican could vote for me, a Democrat can vote for me, a non-party affiliate could vote for me, and a Libertarian could vote for me, anything else.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for that clarification, I, I was not totally aware it was an open primary.
Yeah, it's equal, universal.
All right, anyone else signed up?
No, sir.
Okay, no one else to sign up, anyone in the audience, Mr. Bever?
Yes.
Oh, Kevin. Hey. Hey, Kevin, welcome, it's been a while.
It has been, I miss you too.
Name and address, we know who you are.
Kevin Gunter, 1179 East Wipacucci Trail. Counsel, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, I just wanted to alert the council to something I saw in six hours on the Wipacucci River. While traveling, we always see jet skis, and it's everywhere, you don't know this already, it's known, the number of jet ski. But I did some research on, as we were coming down the river, high speeds in an area where it's actually pretty isolated, a young man hit a tree, we had to render assistance to him, we thought he lost his life, definitely damaged his jet ski. We get him out of the water, his partner puts him on the jet ski, they go back to Spruce Boat Ramp. They're traveling from Spruce Boat Ramp to Lake Russo, and I guess there must be a party going, 'cause they are full speed going there, and that's how that accident happened, they hit a, a navigational hazard, it's a known hazard for those that fish that river, but not if you're from Sarasota, okay? I think that there's an issue with the distance to render assistance, so I'm sure you guys have had to deal with accidents on the river before, but there's only swamps on either side of the road, and this is the second time I've had to deal with this, last time I had to take my neighbor's gator down in the river to pull a guy out who broke his neck. So I, I see a problem coming, and I don't know what that is or how to fix it, but high speeds is probably the main, you know, trip, you know, trib, factor to this. I don't believe in bringing problems without solutions, so I feel that if we put something up at the boat ramps, maybe we put something on our webpage to alert people, we want our tourists to come here and have fun, but definitely be safe, okay? So that was my point.
Troy, kinda take notes on that one, we need to talk about that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
William Bever, 9552 Southwest 192nd Quaid Road. When I was listening to Chairman Zalak, and he was talking about partnerships, and the partnership that the mayor and the council have formed with Marion County Commission, and if he would remain here, I wanted to name some of the employees that have helped us through the years from the very beginning of Blue Run Park, but I noticed that with the partners that we had, Green Ways and Trails, Rainbow River Conservation, who initiated the project of Blue Run Park, Marion County certainly, but one of the early champions of Blue Run Park is here tonight, and he has not really been recognized for his work on Blue Run Park, 'cause Walter Green is sitting over here, he's, he was sleeping, I just woke him up. And we were trying to get the project moving, I'm talking about the restroom now, and all park managers love talking about restrooms, are number one favorite thing, you're not in the park business unless you have a clean restroom for visitors to use, and, and hopefully we're getting a little bit closer to that. But when we were looking for a way to expedite the project, one of the ideas was, well, if we could get it designed, then we'd be in a better position to get some grants, which we did apply for three grants, three F grants, which we weren't successful, but we do have a design for the restroom, which has been reviewed by just about everybody, by the city and the county and so on, but the reason that we got the design done was because the CRA plan, which had not been moving for years, nobody could even identify a project that wasn't a plan, Walter got the plan done, and, and he got $30,000, which approved of the council and the CRA committee, that time we had a CRA council, and Walter initiated $30,000 to do design on Blue Run Park restroom, and actually it happened, so that the design was done because of Walter, and I wanted to recognize Walter for doing it.
All right. Thank you very much, and I, I am remiss in not identifying our, our former mayor, Walter Green, stand up, Walter, so we all know you're here. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, anyone else that would like to speak? Yes, Ms. Don.
Kathy Dunn, 11386 Hendrick Drive. To finish my thought from previous comment is, the money from our fund established in 1993 does not appear to have accomplished the purpose for which it was intended. And to me, transparency of expenditures is very important, and that we follow the master plan that has been developed or redeveloped, and to me, the money, CRA money should not be used to upgrade municipal entities. To me, that is something that should come out of capital expenditures. But I just urge the city council to really put a hold on spending for the CRA money until we can get a grip on our comprehensive master plan for the CRA funds. Thank you.
Okay, folks, let's, I'm not supposed to let you clap.
Just a little quick, just a clarification, just a comment of CRA funds cannot be used for any municipal building or purpose. Parking is outside of a municipal purpose, so just so you know, it is for improving the city as a whole in divided areas, the, the signage that has been mentioned is not considered a municipal purpose, so I just wanted to clarify that, that no, at no time since I've been here, has any CRA money gone strictly for municipal purpose.
Thank you. Hope not, it's not supposed to work that way, right?
And the auditors do look at all that, every year.
Yeah. Anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, please let it be known that the public has had its opportunity to speak, you will have an opportunity to speak throughout this meeting, as we get from one agenda item to the next, if you wanna speak to those agenda items, you can. No one can leave this room saying they don't have an opportunity to speak, that's for sure. Okay, is there any comment from the audience on the consent agenda, which would be Number One and Number Four? Number Two and Number Three on the agenda have been removed for further council discussion. No public comment? Okay.
I'm sorry, which one of the moves off consent agenda? Can we also add four? Is it too late to do that? I'm sorry, me being an amateur council person, I did not speak up in that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So Manny, why don't you put two, three, and four after the department-led reports?
Well, I was gonna ask if you could do it actually after the presentations, since we do have some two other people here for presentations, and those might take some time.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we have the presentation, do we have department-led report?
I'm sorry, I thought it was, my apologies, I didn't, I'm sorry.
We're cool, we're good. Okay, so council, do we, do we have a motion to pass the consent agenda, which is Item Number One?
I, I make a recommend, I make a, what am I doing, I don't even know anymore. I, I move that we accept the city council consent agenda. I move that we accept the city council consent agenda with only item number one, removing items two, three, and four.
We have a second. Second, all in favor? Okay. So, those that are following items number two, three, and four will be discussed after number eight on the department head reports. Okay. Now, we are to the regular agenda, which puts us at number five. And much to our delight, a partner that we're working very close with, that we're getting to know very well, who has driven all the way here with her team to give us the report. We welcome Loretta Schaefer, Tourist Development Director for Marion County. Welcome.
Well, thank you. Good evening. What a treat to be here. And as Mayor White said, my team and I are here tonight. I have both Cory Locke as well as Jessica Heller here and our team back at the office. And we just so enjoy working with the entire city. We do quarterly strategy meetings, not only with the city, but with the Chamber of Commerce. And it's just been really awesome working with y'all. And the last time I was here, we were talking about all the website enhancements and all of the tools and assets that exist for the community. So, we're really excited to be here today. And I appreciated you bringing up the Fort Pooch River and Pennington because that was a huge deal. And I can't tell you how hard the team at the City of Dan Allen worked with FDOT and all the behind the scenes. So, Troy, you and your team, I mean, it's amazing. Very, very exciting, looking forward to all the great things that will happen there. For those who don't know, I'm Loretta Schaefer and I am the Church Director for Marion County. And what we're going to be sharing with you today is our final brand toolkit. It was really created through a very robust, absolutely-
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine. This robust brand evolution really started pre-COVID, where we really started to analyze the, just the community assets and how and where could we really excel and generate even more visibility and create more economic impact from those state, national, and international audiences that our department is charged with targeting. Today's presentation is really to bring awareness that this brand toolkit now exists and is ready for industry and community adoptions. And really to give you a high level look at that behind the scenes process that really has brought us to this place today. But before we dive into that, for especially those in the audience who are unaware, just wanted to share with you our primary responsibility for the county and really give you a quick little synopsis as to what the team and I do. So, they do say teamwork is dream work and we are no different than that. It is really our team's marching orders to work collaboratively and strategically, not only with the Board of County Commissioners and with the community, but also with a nine-member board that is appointed by the Board of County Commissioners to really move the needle and again, to generate that economic prosperity. We are held to state statute 1250104, which is really our guidepost as to how we can do things and what legally we can do with tourism tax dollars that, and ensuring that that fiduciary responsibility is in alignment with all of the strategic initiatives that we recommend and really, again, creating economic prosperity. So, what we know today about tourism is that it's big business and big money for Marion County. Overall, you can see here, over a billion dollars of economic impact comes through Marion County. And that is the direct, the indirect, as well as the induced overall economic impact. What that means for us as residents is it saves almost $550 a year for taxes and generates almost 12,000 jobs through our almost 2 million visitors. And that 9 million almost there toward county services is the funds that our visitors bring into the community and allow for us to have the beautiful parks, the beautiful libraries, our amazing first responders. But then those visitors go back home and we get a prosper from the dollars that they bring into the community. So, it is a huge, huge economic impact. And the more money tourism brings, the more it trickles down into each of the various communities throughout the county. So, this brand evolution process really started, the Chamber Economic Partnership takes the community on annual trips to various destinations that we study. And in 2019, we went with them to Lexington. And when we came back from Lexington, it was very much full hands on deck. How can we create a brand toolkit very similar to Lexington, with the business community, the tourism community, that everybody can really embrace? And really knowing that we could advance our reputation, our identity, and our positioning and showcasing all of the unique, one-of-a-kind offerings that we have and all of our key differentiators that Marion County is so known for. So, having a very research-driven approach really allowed for us to understand the hearts and minds, not only of the visitors that came here, but as well as our community. What we did throughout the process was we had four community workshops in addition to conducting market research. That market research started pre-COVID and then we had an interim brand, really showcasing wide open spaces as soon as COVID was done. And then we throttled back up, re-initiated the research and really figured out what and how we could advance a logo with. From our world-class facilities, our natural wonders, of course, the outdoor adventure that we spoke a lot about tonight, what we know about Marion County is that every single mile of our county really surprises and delights and welcomes. And it really inspires in a way that our competitors may promise, but that they can't deliver. So, in addition to Marion County being the horse capital of the world, over the past five years, our community has really been blessed with a lot of new additions and assets that really further underscore our brand story and that unique selling proposition. And they include things that you all know, the World Equestrians Center, the Florida Aquatic Swimming and Training Facility, all the advancements that's gone on on the Greenway and opening up all those lines so that we can really open up that outdoor playground. The 14 National Historic Landmark has been a real game changer with our history. Growing arts and culture has just been abundant throughout the entire county. Murals and artistry just going up everywhere, everywhere. And our thriving, you know, hospitality industry, they just continue to bring more restaurants, more shopping, and more opportunities for not only us as visitors, but also for our traveling guests. So, I'm going to share with you just a quick video before I walk you into the behind the scenes of the research that has gotten us to this point. There is a little bit of music. You can't hear it, but I'm not going to sing. It's not really anybody articulating it, but... That's really music with spirit. Really, it's bottled up right there. So, there it is. And of course, all white. And then knowing that we had to transfer into color. So, this county logo, it's whole. And it really allows for us to tell our awesome story and really own and further target those guests who have found us, but also really inspire those guests who have not yet found us and found our slice of heaven. So, as you can see here, the logo has evolved where the horse head really represents again, that horse capital of the world. And the iconic horse head was one of those resounding things that came out of research from both the community as well as our research, that they really liked it. We had some challenges with our last logo by virtue of ADA accessibility, a whole lot of colors. And knowing that we really wanted to be on things like billboards and capture a lot of that R O O, which is return on objectives and things that were, that really needed great strength, we needed to really change the color scheme and make it very bold. You can see there, the lines underneath represent our beautiful waterways as well as our rolling hills and our rolling vistas and those flowing waters throughout Marion County. So, in order to really figure out whether it was our guests or whether it was our community, what we did was we hired and actually sent out an RFP. And for those in the general public who don't know, that is a request or proposal. And what we were looking for, because we had conducted independent research outside of hiring an agency, but we wanted to hire the best brand agency in the nation. And so, what we did was we built a very robust RFP. We sent it out and we actually got eight respondents. Fabulous proposals. Many people wanted to bid on it. But through that, we whittled that down to the top three. And we developed a review committee and brought in the top three agencies. And they had to pitch and really tell us how they were going to take us to the next level, knowing that we not only needed a logo, but we needed a very, very comprehensive brand toolkit that the community could adopt and embrace. So, what this slide is really showing is that, this is the visitors in particular. And it's really showing that out of the six areas, we were really looking to see which one was the most awe-inspiring, the winning logo won by double percentage points. When it came to our locals, you can see across the board, they very much resonated with that silhouette horse head. And then the visitors as well. And what's really interesting, when we tested taglines, Florida's Natural Wonder, which I know isn't a surprise to Dan Allen because you all are so full of it, actually was triple percentage points. So, oftentimes, when you do logo development, sometimes they get very close and you have to kind of pick and choose winners. In this case, it was hands down the top logo as well as the top tagline, which of course, made it very easy. Then when you look at this slide, it really shows you our brand story. How could we really tell it in a very concise way so that as we were doing marketing, that we were doing sales, that we really had a compass to look at, to really say, whether it was a community, in a very short, concise way? So, what our brand evolution messaging and our brand story is, is Ocalomarian County is unlike anything you've ever seen or imagined. How did I not know this about this? Sum's up the wonder that first-time visitors experience in Ocala and surrounding communities like Dan Allen, Bellevue, McIntosh, and Redding. From its otherworldly natural springs to the compounds of the World Equestrian Center and Florida Aquatic Swimming and Training, to its vibrant restaurants, point shops, dynamic arts and culture, and historic sites, the destination takes you by surprise in the best of ways. Internationally renowned amongst equestrians, cyclists, geologists, and even the world of classic cinematography, Ocalomarian County still feels like a hidden gem to those who aren't already insiders. And yet, when you're here, you're never an outsider. The relaxed, genuine friendliness of the county's communities make you feel welcome wherever you go. But we didn't stop there because we knew we had to break it down. We had to, in a very short and concise way, have that brand promise. What was it we were going to promise our guests? That we could really lay our laurels in? And it really came down to, Ocalomarian County exceeds expectations and fills visitors with awe. Its charm, landscape, and natural wonders truly have to be seen to be believed. And we all know that to be true. For our competitive positioning, because we compete with all the big dogs, whether it's Orlando, Dinafa, however, we really tell you then that we're going to set up, set ourselves apart and really deliver on the excellence of customer service. And what we landed on was, from natural wonders and outdoor adventure to world-class sporting facilities and culture, every mile of this destination surprises, delights, and welcomes you. It inspires awe in a way its competitors may promise, but can't deliver. And then boiling it all down to our USP, which is your unique selling proposition, and getting it all down into one sentence, it was to discover Ocalomarian is to discover an unexpected Florida. So, ultimately, our newly-evolved logo represents our awesome brand story and again, is really one that we can own and further target current guests that love us, while inspiring those new guests that have not really discovered us. The team's already begun the transformation on all major platforms, such as ocalomarian.com, and is updating all the multitude of touchpoints and tools we create and provide. And we really expect the full brand to be fully revitalized, including the painting of our building to match the brand within the next six to 12 months. The final brand toolkit is found on our website and is also here in a QR code. And what you'll find in that toolkit are all the things that I touched on today, as well as a whole lot of pages full of taglines, sub-brands, do's and don'ts, as well as how to apply it and how to really use some of our tools and resources, especially for those small businesses that may not have brochures or may not have those things built. We've built them and put them in the toolkit to make it all the easier for folks to be able to adopt. And I know before you is a rack card and there's just a multitude of things that we offer. Partners that are tourism-based, and that's a free landing page on our website that really allows for businesses to have their own real estate on there. All the research that we do for the community to really understand all those economic impacts and understand our key areas and those markets that we target. For those partners that do participate, we, there's actually a dashboard and a special report for them. And all their information is kept proprietary because for us, marketing the entire county, all that we need to see is just that holistic research as a whole. So, whether it's our website, whether it's all the tools, whether it's our welcome center, we just want you to know that we are an extension of your team and we really exist to help you all be successful and help you with the tools and resources you need to take Dan Allen to the next level. So, grateful for you all having been here tonight and certainly happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, come in.
I pulled this off, oh, back in Aprils. Marion County, this is from the Ocala Star banner, second week of April issue, one of those days within that timeframe. Marion County's tourist development tax revenue exceeds $500,000 in February. How can Dan Allen, since we contribute to the heads and beds tax, recover some of that money for our marketing? We have council appropriated $2,000 to put up Discover Dan Allen website, which is awesome. It's attracting attention. But as far as print medium, which would be at our visitor centers and so on, as, you know, people exit and enter Florida, what opportunity exists for us through Marion County's Tourism Visitor Bureau to get funding for us to produce a print media to distribute? Also, magazine ads, Outdoor Magazine, Discover Geographic, other channels. How can we get that money? Don't say go to Visit Florida, because I've been there. And they said, a small city like Dan Allen, we don't offer a grant.
Yeah, and maybe you've kind of gone away from that, haven't you? Yeah. And Mayor White can tell you, he's brought this up at the TDC meeting. And it's one of those things where the entire bed tax is to represent Marion County as a whole. But I will tell you, in the upcoming year, we have carved in, if the budget passes, as we proposed, a $50,000 grant program that would allow for not only the adoption of this, but will be of assistance to you all. So, there is a program coming in the next fiscal year, even above and beyond our funding program for the events because all of the events that come to Dan Allen are certainly applicable for our funding program. So, we offer almost $350,000 for events that are helping us to generate multiple room nights. And so, the program that we're actually proposing for the new fiscal year will be one more of that collateral and support to your marketing initiatives.
And I have one more question.
Yeah, no problem.
It's a suggestion. Okay. How can Dan Allen team up with your people that go to our expos within the county and represent Dan Allen? Is, can you, could we possibly communicate more with our Chamber of Commerce Visitor Center to do that? For example, this coming Saturday, there's a outdoor expo at WEC in their great, big convention place. And I would have loved to have, would have loved to have seen Dan Allen in Marion County and have a booth there and hand out literature, information, guide people, whatever. But that hasn't happened and we're going, you know, like second year for that outdoor expo. Can we do it next year?
Um, yeah, it's a huge challenge. We're a small team of, there's really just, and it just put it- We're a small team of, there's really just, and just to put it in perspective, Cory literally had to work 12 days straight because of the World Series. So whether it is we're traveling out of town or having to be at the events that we find, it is a very big challenge to be able to go and set up booths and to have that visibility on top of our load. But we do meet with the team quarterly. We're certainly happy to armor with the collateral. Our collateral is your collateral. But if it's feasible, we definitely try to make it work. But I will tell you, between our travel schedules and the weekend events, we do spread ourselves quite thin with the small team, but doesn't mean that it's impossible.
Possibly round up volunteers, even volunteers through our high school, public service organizations, ROTC and so on. So don't worry about manpower. If you would coordinate those kinds of things where we can team up with Marion County's visitor bureau, we'll find the volunteers.
That's great.
Yeah, so I'll stay in touch with you.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you. And good batter, please continue to look at the website. We certainly aren't perfect, so if there's something that you see that we can improve or do better, whether that be the Dan Ellen page, whether that be, you know, you can't feed us too much information, all the special events. Jessica, she does an awesome job really pushing out the communication and really inspiring journalists to come here. And so please, continue to send us any and all information you have. And thank you so much for having us here tonight. Very appreciative. Thank you for having me.
And Loretta, I want to let you know, we appreciate these quarterly meetings we're having with you and your team. I think being able to sit down with you and just focus totally on Dan Ellen for an hour, it's really helpful. I think, I think we need to continue doing that.
Agreed. And your team is fantastic. I appreciate them all greatly. Thank you for so much.
Thank you for coming.
You bet.
Thank your whole team for coming. Safe travels home.
Same.
I said, "Thank your whole team for coming tonight. Safe travels home."
It's Cory and Jessica, right? Yes, hi. All right, very good.
Get her out of here before she has a baby.
I know. Ma'am, I sat up here, pardon me, like that. God bless her.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, now we're moving to item number six, and it's another presentation by Father Paul Hamilton, Dan Ellen's Community Services. Yes. Why don't you give them an opportunity to leave? Welcome, Father. Even though we know you're a man whose credentials are without dispute, you still have to give us your name and address.
My name is Father Paul Hamilton, from the Church of the Holy Faith, Blue Cove, and Dan Ellen. I think I have a prime, there we go. I want to say how happy I am to be here, and I do feel tortured by the mayor, because he said I had less than 10 minutes to speak. And I don't know of any minister who knows what 10 minutes is. But I know that you, like me, are concerned about growth and new life in Dan Ellen, and I'm here to share with you some aspects of that. Four entities that are growing and expanding here in Dan Ellen, and they are all found on the, what is now called the campus of the Church of the Holy Faith. And all four of these entities are about serving Dan Ellen, and we find that so very exciting. Next slide. First of all, we have, a year ago, we founded a new not-for-profit corporation, and in fact, the federal government has designated us a complete and full charity. So we now have the capacity to offer great services to the people of the greater Dan Ellen area, and we've already begun to do so. For example, just on Saturday, we had the second health fair that we've had on our campus. Ninety-five people, underserved, underinsured, poor people, came and saw dental students from the University of Florida, under supervision, and had their teeth looked at when they hadn't been to a dentist for the longest time. And we had volunteers come to work with them. A year ago, we had, or six months ago, a similar event where medical doctors, lawyers, came and served the underserved, and we intend to do a bunch more of those. Also, just a couple of days ago, yeah, here's another illustration about food. This is about four entities, Dan Ellen Community Services, the Church of the Holy Faith, Jewish Sisterhood, and the Black Church of Greater Dimensions. Now, Holy Faith Church has had a food pantry for 20 years. Once a month, we give out food on the first Monday of the month, and we serve like 50, 60 families. We now have a new partnership going with the former owner of a restaurant here in Dan Ellen, and now it is exploding. For the first time, we served lunch to all the people who came. Volunteers came at seven o'clock in the morning and made sandwiches and fruit and desserts, and gave it to each person. Next month, we're going to have a spaghetti dinner. These are all takeout. You take it home with you. It's going to be a spaghetti dinner next month. The month after, it's chicken and rice. So we're now going to have food available to the homeless, just senior citizens, anybody who needs food, and have now hooked up with an agency in Ocala that are going to be delivering great amounts of food to us. So we're going to hopefully expand our food pantry to twice a month, and this food ministry can go on and serve even more. It's a very exciting thing, and it's one of the things being offered by Dan Ellen Community Services. Next. Now, I mentioned to you already about this dental clinic that we just had, and the legal one. On top of that, I'm really excited about these things. Somebody has given me $15,000 to buy a medical van. We have two volunteer, super competent nurses who are going to manage the van, and we're going to go around greater Dan Ellen, serving the underserved, people who don't have insurance, people who don't go to the doctor for things like blood pressure checks, wound care, et cetera. And that is more than on the drawing board. We're now beginning to look around for a van, and we're talking about insurance. Another agency has offered us the insurance. It's amazing. And again, it's to serve a need in our community. Onward we go next. Now, we've had also, the church has had a lot of community events since I've come here two years ago, and, you know, the Episcopal Church, my denomination, exists for people outside of us. We don't exist for ourselves. And so we've offered a number of community events. We had a 9/11 memorial. We had a person who survived 9/11 came, the mayor was there. It was a very powerful day. We're going to have another one in October called Dan Ellen Days, where not-for-profit organizations and all other businesses and food trucks and entertainment are going to come to our campus, which is a very large piece of land, for the community. So that will be coming up to serve as well. Next. We have Girl Scouts. We have Girl Scouts who operate out of our place, again, out of the church side of things. They've been there for a long time. Next. This is the community, Dan Ellen Days, that I say is coming up, which you'll be hearing a lot more about, because we've begun to advertise it. We're going to have a lot of fun for all families in Dan Ellen. Next. Now, this excites me too. This is the church side. Christianity has, for the last 2,000 years, been breaking up. If you don't like somebody's thinking or the way they look, that you break up and construct your own. Whereas what's happening at Holy Faith is just the opposite. A black church down the road is moving into our campus as of the 1st of September. Dr. Richardson's and his entire congregation, "We're not going to make them what we are. They're not going to make us what they are, but we're all going to be under one roof." And the other thing about it, which is so thrilling, his congregation wants to join our not-for-profit agency in serving Dan Ellen. So we've already begun to partner on projects. We, their leadership and my leadership drove around Dan Ellen the other day looking at housing stock, because we want to do housing in Dan Ellen, and we have some very exciting ideas about housing possibilities. We've already begun to look, you already know, our CEO, Patrick Shepherd, who's been involved with the city, and he's very involved with us too. So this church is coming. And look at the, what this can symbolize, a black church and a white church. In our country today, we're so divided, and we're so split up, and there's so much hate and distance. This is just the opposite, and we're hoping that it makes a statement and begins to touch people. Next. On top of that, if that ate it up, we now have a Jewish community housed at Holy Faith. Sixty Jewish women from this area who do not have a temple, but they now have a home in the, in the, in the Holy Faith complex. Incredible people. The founding woman's husband was the personal attorney to the mayor of New York City, that kind of folk. And they too have tremendous social concerns, and they want to join us in, again, reaching out, doing things, mentoring for people in our area. And we've already begun to do things together. We had a Christmas, Hanukkah party, and Holy Thursday. We had a Seder, and then they came to our service. It's extraordinary. Again, I don't know of this kind of collaboration before. But now you have an Episcopal church, a black church, a Jewish congregation, and a not-for-profit agency, all housed in one complex not far down the street from here. Next. And to house all this, we're going to expand our church building. We have been in Dan Ellen for 58 years, and it's a small, worn-out complex for all the activities over the years. And we've begun a campaign, this magnificent new structure addition to the building, all glass walls. It's going to cost us $2 million, and we've already begun the fundraising. I'm going to pass a plate around before I leave here tonight. But that's going to, we're adding on to the building for the black church, for the Jewish group, and for the agency, so that we can be even more under one roof. So those are some of the exciting things that are happening down the street, and I wanted you to know that, and I thank you for already partnering with us. The mayor has been extremely supportive. I thank this gentleman here, he kept a promise he made to me a year ago. This coming week, they're going to fix the road in front of my church. So la vino, papa. And lastly, I think we've already approached the budget end of things here for Dan Ellen. We have the idea, in collaboration with your need, to begin a resource center for Dan Ellen, 24 hours a day. You would call up if your husband is beating you up, if you have an alcohol problem and need to know where to go. Whatever the need is, we will have a 24-hour resource center, and we're asking the city to help us begin that, so that we can better serve the people who live in our greater region. So thank you for this time. Thank you for honoring me on my 50th anniversary, and we're moving ahead with great excitement. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Quite inspiring. All right, moving right along. We are now at item number seven, presentation. Welcome Jonathan Lee from Safe Park. We have your team here with you.
So I'm not Jonathan Lee, this is Jonathan Lee. So I'm the current president of Safe Park, but before we begin talking about Safe Park and what we offer, I wanted to talk about our partnership with you all. I'm from Ocala, Florida. I was born and raised in Ocala, Florida, and I treat every business relationship like a marriage. So it's important to know who you're dealing with, what we bring to the table, and why we are different from the rest. And I want to talk about myself and my capabilities and my love for Marion County. So my parents came to Ocala, Florida in 1985, Brooke. My mom was a Baskin Robbins girl, and my dad was a front desk gas station clerk. Fast forward 30 years later, making some amazing friends along the way, we are now one of the largest private developers in Marion County. So they are truly living the American dream. And with that type of atmosphere I grew up, became me as our firstborn son. I was instilled with great discipline and hard work ethic. I also joined the military. I was in the Army for five years. I went to Vanguard High School, Howard Middle School, and H Street Elementary. I went to the University of Florida to study business, and I joined the family business as well. We made, I helped on, mainly do, is to help transform Ocala, so that the Hilton Garden Inn downtown Ocala, Holiday Suites with Sky, apartments, other hotels, and now Garen Two Resorts as well. But along with that came, I'm now 30 years old, and it's time for this bird to fly. So it's great to be in a family business, and it's great, and I love my parents, I don't need to say anything, but I would like to start doing some things myself. And so I made some great friends along the way, and there's one, there's two men that promote Dan Ellen for many years up in Dan Ellen. One is Mayor Green, for sure. Every sentence is, "Dan Ellen, Dan Ellen, best in Dan Ellen." And we are 100% looking at it, for sure. And it's Nick Patel, also. And so Nick Patel and Mayor Green are your biggest ambassadors and advocates, and they constantly tell us every day, every conversation you have with them, about why Dan Ellen is amazing. And I truly believe you guys are, but I believe also, God works in mysterious ways, and it brought me here. And I was making great friends with the owner of this company, and he said, "Karen, we're coming to Florida, and we a Florida man, and this was a chance for me to utilize my skillset. And if we take this account, I will be personally responsible for your account, and it would be an absolute blessing." But without further ado, the owner and operator and the brains behind all this, Safe Park, Jonathan Lee.
Thank you.
Jonathan Osbey, you want to join me? So as Karen just said, Safe Park is a parking management company. We pride ourselves on people, we're a people-first organization. It's what we do, whether it's our employees, clients, customers, whoever we are working with. We want to be more than just a vendor or service provider. We want to be that partner, and we bring on people like Karen to join us and partner with us to grow our organization. So with that being said, I want to introduce Jonathan Osbey, partner of our company, and also a parking consultant. That's a lot of lead-up I got today. And I'm not quite sure who we made upset that we have to follow, Father Hamilton. Let me just say. So Mayor White, esteemed ladies and gentlemen of the city council and city staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Ms. Jan, thank you for inviting us to come in as part of your request for proposal. We've got bound copies of this presentation as well, printed on recycled paper, that we'll be happy to hand out to the council members just as soon as we're done. This presentation and proposal is for all of you, so please feel free to stop at any time with any questions that you might have. Kind of the main thing we like to say is that we're local, we're big fans of Marion County. As Karan mentioned and Jonathan mentioned, we've been, we've been here, well, Karan's been here for a very long time. We've been in Florida for about three and a half years. We've grown from zero location to 15, so we've had some, we've had some good success, and we've done it because of great partnerships. So I guess, I guess you're the clicker, somebody out there is clicker, excellent. So as you can see, again, I'm not going to read, thank you very much. Way to go, Amanda, outstanding. So I'm not going to read you our presentation particularly, because I was surprised that we were given two hours, and we want to make sure that we stay. There we go. All right, good, our guest's gone here.
It'll be a fifty grand.
It won't be the first one, I have the ability to empty them for some reason, there's no doubt about that, because not everybody likes to talk about parking, believe it or not. So I'm not going to read you the presentation, I'll just give you the highlights, and as I mentioned, we've got copies for you. So we're here to partner with the city of Dan Ellen. We know that you've got a couple of other vendors that you've talked to. I'm sure they're doing a great job. We like the fact that we're based just down the road in Gainesville and Ocala. We have offices in each of those cities. We're looking forward to expanding, hopefully, into Dan Ellen as well. We are based in Florida, the ownership is from Florida, we've got about 200 employees throughout the southeast. Well over half of those are in the great state of Florida. In my background, as a parking consultant, a parking operator, also a CEO of Mobile Now, a mobile payment company, I've actually brought paid parking to about 50 municipalities up and down the eastern seaboard. Not that that's what we're proposing, we're just talking about a boat ramp, but we just want to let you know that we've got a lot of experience doing this. We listen and customize each of our opportunities to make sure that we listen to our customers. We have also in here a nice letter from the Florida History, Inc., which I heard mixed reviews on, with Main Street, Florida Main Street, we've had tremendous success. We are their exclusive provider and only sponsor. We've had great success. We've had great success throughout central and southern Florida as well. We've also been consulting with communities in the area. We think that has tremendous value and helps to separate Safe Park from a lot of the other companies that are out there. EQ. The, the owner of one of the two, there's two technology companies that we have proprietary experience with, that we, that we've been part of our pitch because we believe that not one size fits all. So what we're proposing to you is the possibility of using texting technology, does not require an app to be downloaded or anything like that, because we know how much everybody likes to download apps on their phones. But if you can make a phone call and can push 911, you can actually, don't do that, but you can actually utilize the service from texting. And we also have an outstanding unit called a T2 Pay Station Cosmo and we've got a great one that's refurbished to dramatically reduce the costs. In fact, if we're able to work on this the way we envisioned, the net cost to the city of Denellin will be nothing. So I'm sorry about that. I hope that doesn't mess up the budget. I know we've, we've got some issues that we're working through there. But TES was founded by the same guy, if you've ever been to a restaurant with a digital pager, one of those cool coasters, that's that same technology. He sold that company and then got into the texting business. They have about 75% of the market share and he lives just up the road in Naples, Florida. T2's been around since 1999. They have about 85% of their, of their market. They're not single space parking meters. I know that those have been popular for a long time. I'm from Oklahoma City where the parking meter was invented, don't hate me, it was way back in 1935, although my definition of older has certainly changed recently. But T2 is a great product, it gives you the ability to go and pay in a machine. We do not recommend receipts. We are very proud of our environment, environmentally friendly environment. I'm on the LEED certification committee, as a matter of fact, for the International Parking and Mobility Institute. So we spend a lot of time making the environment better anywhere we can, particularly in the area of parking. Who knew there was such a thing, right? LEED certification for parking garages. So, and again, very quickly, this is a boat launch and parking solution. Sorry. It's very easy for us, it's very easy for people to utilize and start paying for parking. As I mentioned, they can either do a texting service or pay the machine if you want to do that. Again, we don't recommend paper receipts. It's all solar, so there's, there's no grid footprint, there's no negative impact to the environment whatsoever. We've also got it here for you to look at later, how simple it is to text and we could do a demo and things like that, but we don't think that's a great use of our time. We also recommend very minimal signage, all of which will be made from recycled materials as well. Typically, the cities like to put those up. In fact, there's usually an ordinance that says the city has to install them, but we provide them, made entirely out of recycled materials. And most importantly, we know that when, when the dock is humming, there's just not enough parking. Now, I've not been here for that, but we drove around earlier today and I noticed two sets of signs, some that say, this is official boat parking, please park here. And then just a few more that say, this is not official boat parking and if you park here, you'll come back and your car will be here. So we, we'd like to, and part of what we also offer is almost unlimited consulting services, which is principally me, because we can help you with that with some signage. There was mentioned earlier about a wayfinding program and a desire to spend or not spend $225,000. We've done a lot of work with the U.S. Olympic Committee, Major League Baseball, the National Football League, Florida Department of Transportation, and there are some other ways we might be able to help you reduce those costs further through sponsorship, as well as a number of other areas that we'd be very happy to help you with that. But we can also help build a good neighbor program in order to help some of those folks who don't want boats and trailers parking in their area. Maybe they were more amenable to that for a small fee or if we can help drive business into those lots year-round, not just when they're here for the weekends and nights, spring break, et cetera. So those are just some of the ideas that we have. We'll go ahead and skip a couple more of these slides, because again, they're just, they're just all how to do, how to utilize the system and I want to make sure that we have plenty of time to do that. We've also got, you can receive confirmation, it's very simple, and I'm not trying to rush through this, but I know that, that we've, that we've already been here for a while and I get the feeling I don't really have two hours. We also, if you'd like, depending upon how you want to set the rate structure, a couple of things to consider. Number one, there's a pretty good chance that, that folks who live in Denellin are really excited about this and can't wait for the possibility to have to pay for parking. The good news is our technology and our program is such that we, we can set up multiple rates, we can even have, you know, have a senior program. I really appreciate the monument that you have outside, having also served our country for three years in the Army with this special forces group, just down the road at Fort Bragg, North Carolina. But we have the ability to have multiple rate structure. We can set up accounts. I brought, I've, I've been doing this for quite a while and I can tell you, there's a lot of things that you can do to make this much more friendly. Think of this kind of the hotel motel tax, which first passed in Florida 35 years ago, because then we, we're getting the people who are coming in to utilize the services that don't necessarily live here to pay for them. It works in exactly the same manner. So know that that's an option that we have for you as well. Depending upon how you choose to price it, you can also get a reminder if someone needs to move their vehicle or if it's time for them to renew their parking session. We also have some recommendations for things like annual passes, season passes, senior discount program, military service program, et cetera. So there's just lots and lots of things that we can do. We've also got exit surveys, which are very nice. There's no additional cost for any of these services, because everybody likes to know how they did, right? We now live in the five-star world. Somebody that uses Uber quite a bit, I can tell you that I like when I get in the car and there are nine signs that say, please give me five stars. Would you like a bottle of water? This bottle like this big, I just love those. I'm like, at some point, it's just going to be like a shot glass of water, but that's okay. And then here we talk about again, we've got some nice slides about the value of the convenience. Basically, it says that we're a good partner, we'd love to work with you in this environment. Like I said, particularly if you like the idea of sharing, thank you, sharing the expenses with the folks, particularly those that are not from Denellin, then we can actually get to you where you've got a net cost whatsoever. I also mentioned consulting. Any client of Safe Park receives free consulting, which is principally me. I waive my normal $475 an hour, so you're getting a better deal than Jerry Jones or George Steinbrenner, may be rest in peace. That's right, I'm the first person you might meet that was yelled at by George Steinbrenner and Jerry Jones and hired by both of them. And if you guys don't know who those people are, then you just need to gundam. So, just kidding. I got a couple of Ronald Reagan quotes that probably would come out very well, I would think so, fraternity brother mine, by the way. Then we got to talk about our training program that you don't care about other than we really know what we do. We will come down and train any city staff that's necessary. The good news is we also have the ability to provide enforcement, enforcement with whatever penalties or tickets that you think are appropriate, you think are fair. We're not going to come down here and tell you how much you should charge your citizens if, if they inadvertently don't pay for parking, et cetera. Just, just think of us as a partner rather than just a vendor. On the next slide, we've got some information for you, and one more, I'm sorry, I'm moving even faster than myself. We've got the potential cost, just for the signage, we'll cover the cost of the sign, so your initial out-of-pocket ultimately is going to end up being zero, that's a good number. On the next one, the optional T2 unit, as I mentioned to you, we've got a refurbished unit that's going to cost somewhere around $6,000, if you want a brand new one, kind of like the thought process in buying a car, right? As soon as it drives off the lot, it immediately drops half in value. That's about $10,000 or $11,000. Or with our proposal, we actually can pay for that out of revenue, so your actual out-of-pocket cost would be nothing. And I know we've got a lot of competitors out there that like to charge $25,000 to $50,000. We think that's crazy. We think what's a better idea is to partner with the city, generate just enough revenue initially to cover whatever cost there might be and then start generating a modest profit that can go for, towards whatever is appropriate. Help the wetlands, improve the, improve the environment. I heard something about a very expensive bathroom, maybe we can buy some toilet paper or something to help out in that environment. Although I lived in Colorado for 24 years and was part with the National Park Service, we built one bathroom and it cost $1.4 million. Don't do that, because then it snows and then rocks come down and it's the whole thing, it's not a good thing. Then on warranty, right? Everybody, I know that's kind of, I'm sorry, I'm just a frustrated comedian, forgive me. Trying to help everybody stay up. Our warranty, the first year, everything's included, short of somebody coming in and tying a rope around it and you don't have any big trucks in Florida. And somebody dragged that into the lake or something, that's vandalism, there might be a small cost there. But as far as the unit itself, there's no cost whatever whatsoever. Ongoing warranty is only $1,000 a year. We've got a local company in Ocala that will come out and service the unit if need be. Warranty covers the machine, the texting service, other than having to replace a sign from time to time, which we will do, there's no cost associated with them as well. And if you're thinking this sounds too good to be true, sorry, we gave it to you in writing, so now you know it's, it's the legit deal. So we can keep going. There's, we've got lots more pages in here, but I'm just going to leave that with you. It talks about our guarantee. Our guarantee is we're going to do everything that we say that we do. My company personally is called The Parking Whisperer. Feel free to Google me or come on parkingwhisper.com. You'll see I've been around for a while and I'm the only parking consultant in the world that offers 100% guaranteed fee. If you're not happy with my work, don't pay me. I've had that offer since 1999 and so far, even Jerry and George ponied up the cash, although it did take me a while to collect from Jerry, I got to tell you. And I'm a lifelong Dallas Cowboy fan, which I know is very popular in central Florida, so. I got a few smiles. And, and I hope this wasn't too lighthearted. I just wanted to let you know, this is what we do. We park cars. We make it easy. We work in boat docks, we've worked with them in New Orleans, we've worked with them on the west coast, Sausalito, California, for example, is a group that I've worked with, New Orleans, we rolled out about seven months ago. And one of the things that we also bring, which is really nice, is safety. Because again, I'm not going to tell you that I've been here before today, because I haven't, I've been to Ocala and Gainesville many times. I've been to Denellin, Pennsylvania, they spell the last part a little bit different, they were a customer of mine for many years at Mobile Now. But safety is important, because people come in, even while we were here, there were some folks that had a nice bass boat, there was a gentleman, a group that came in with kayaks and they got kind of close. And I'm thinking that you probably have more than two vehicles every 20 minutes on a Friday or a Saturday, just going to go out there and say that. So we can help them by helping to organize that with signage and information. We also, through texting, we have the ability, which is also a nice safety feature, anybody that uses the text to park, we have the ability to reach back out to them only with your permission and there are several very specific rules to prevent spamming and things like that. It's also important to note that both of the systems, T2 and TES, have what's called full encryption. Now, you've heard of encryption, right? And we've all heard of data breaches and we don't like those, because bad things happen with bad people, with our credit card information. Both TES and T2 encrypt each digit, so it's virtually impossible to have a data breach when you've only got one digit of somebody's credit card, because I bet you right now, everybody in here that has a credit card, I bet nine is one of your numbers. So that's about the degree of security that you have when it comes to that. And again, from a safety standpoint, we also can provide, if you'd like, enforcement with fixed cameras that requires no involvement from your police department, because we're assuming they've got better things to do than go out and make the, you know, make sure everybody's paying for parking or answer any questions that they might have. And again, those systems as well have the ability to be with no out-of-pocket cost to the city whatsoever.
Okay, so thank you for the presentation.
I'm sorry, it's like trying to get a sip of water out of a fire hose, it's my time in New York, I apologize.
You're good, you're good. Yeah, thank y'all for coming and I'm glad you're here. Just trying to kind of take in everything. So your system, is it done by, they just pick up their phone and they?
Absolutely, we have what's called a P code, which is, which is a, a, a big secret, that's for the parking code.
Okay.
And that's, that's up to five letters or numbers and it can be something like DUN1 or whatever grouping that you would like. And so you'll go to a number that's on the sign, let's say it's 23031.
Oh, okay.
So we, we came up with C part nine so far.
Okay.
Most, most of our samples have the word park in them.
So I would, I would tax that in my thumb, Rockberg? And then I'm going to get a, and then convert it?
You're going to get a text message right back that's going to say, would you like to pay? These are what you, these are your payment options.
Okay.
And then you click on it and it will ask you, do you want us to save your information or not?
Right, yeah.
And you, you have to opt in or opt out, that's your choice. About 85% of people say, okay, I'll let you keep my credit card information, your choice. Then you go to, then you'll go to what's called a web interface. Again, it's still all on your phone, you haven't done anything else and it will ask you for your credit card information. We will take whatever credit cards the city chooses. You put that information in, then you'll get a text back that says, thank, and again, this is customized, thank you, welcome, you've now purchased four hours all day through the millen, next millennium, whatever parking that you want. And then when you leave, we have a geofence in the area, so we'll know when you leave. When you leave, we'll send you a note thanking you and asking you to answer our one-question survey, which has five stars.
Gotcha. And so, but I'm going to have to put in my license tag?
Yes.
Okay, so then since now you have my license tag, I can park there. Is there a, a app that our police will have? In other words, is there a spreadsheet that says, okay, there's 17 cars in the parking lot that have paid?
Yep.
And can our police or whoever it is we have enforcing it, can they pull up that information so that they know car number 18 didn't pay yet and that's when it gets the ticket?
That's a great question and the answer is yes. That's the one and only time we use an app and the app is free and it's available to law enforcement, it's available to city council members, public works department, any of your, any of the staff whatsoever. It's also important to note that all data that we, that we utilize on your behalf is your data. I think there's an attorney here somewhere. So that's all your data, it's black and white, it's very clear. We don't, we don't have access to it after the parking session is ended, that's entirely your information. We also have the ability to purge all of that data after whatever period of time the city of Denellin, typically most cities have a rule, 90 days, six months, whatever, again, we, we fall right into place. In fact, most of our contracts are actually on paper that's generated by our clients rather than ours, that's how easy they are to work with.
Our attorneys, thank you. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I have, I have one.
Yes, sir.
How, how does your company make money off of your systems? Are you, do you get a percentage of it?
That's a great question. Yes, Mr. Mayor, we typically have a convenience.
What company, if they had a presentation, their main source of funding was the fines that would be?
Yeah, and, and unfortunately, that's not a great look, in my opinion, as someone that's been in the parking industry for 40 years. So we make, well, we as, as Safe Park, make a very modest fee from those transactions and then we have what's called a convenience fee. And that's something that is negotiated, that you approve and that convenience fee is designed to pay all of our modest operating expenses, a small profit. If you choose to include the credit card fee in that, that can be part of the convenience fee, or the city can pay the convenience fee, or it can be also added in addition to that convenience fee. That's one of the great things, and there aren't very many, that came out of COVID, is we all got a lot more comfortable, fortunately or unfortunately, with Uber Eats and DoorDash and, you know, this fee and that fee, et cetera. We only have one and that is our only source of income. Now, we do have, if we bring in the cameras for, for enforcement, which is great from a vandalism standpoint, and heaven forbid if anything bad happens, I am not a security consultant, we're not in the security business, but that information is live streamed to the cloud and is retained for whatever period of time, is, is allowed under your charter and further information, if there's a request, law enforcement, et cetera, they can have bits and pieces for whatever reason. But you know, beyond that, we don't, we don't have any other access to that. But we do have the ability to, to collect revenues after people have left, but any of those fees are fees that we do participate in, but you set the rates. I mean, there, we've, we've got people out there, I can't remember if I said this, I apologize, but some of our, some of the folks that are in this space charge as, as much as $50, $75, $100, $125. Again, usually there's a state law and I'm not sure what it is in Florida, but usually there's at least a state law, if not city ordinance that caps that. We don't think that's a good idea. I mean, who wants the last impression of coming to Denellin to get a, to get a ticket in the mail two weeks later and says, because you didn't pay your $5 or your $10 or your $3, please send us $227.50. Man, I can't wait to go back to Denellin, you know? And, and there's not any way to tell a lot of people that this happened, right? And there's not any way to tell a lot of people that this happened, right? There's no technology that allows you to tell everybody about your experience. That's why we put all of this, in fact, all of our contracts are very clear, we will negotiate in good faith together, but you are the final decision-maker on what those fee structures might be. And also, we typically don't charge for the first time because we believe people are human. If I'm coming out here with my kids or grandchildren, and I'm trying to get the boat, and I'm making sure they're safe, and all the things that you do with boating or kayaking or flat, I can't do that. The flat bed, yeah, I'm just like, how am I not sinking? So, you know, and you forget something. So typically, the first one, you get a very nice letter that says, hey, by the way, and here's a picture, want to let you know, thank you for coming to Danell and being out here, but it seems like maybe you forgot to pay. If you can pay in the next 15 days, we just want you to pay the original, whatever the parking rate is. We typically do that one time for a person, and then the second one is, hey, and then we just kind of go from there. And again, all of these are customized, all of these are approved by your designated representative.
One last question. If the fee was $10, what would be normal, normal split between the city and your company?
Well, the way we would normally recommend doing that is, let's say, with your example, $10, let's say the convenience fee is another dollar. Under that example, the city of Danell would get all 10 of the $10. We would pay the credit card processing fee out of that. We would pay for the signage and the 24-hour customer service and a modest profit out of the rest. But our goal is if your sign says $10, you get, I'm from Oklahoma, we're not great with math, so if it's 10 and you get 10, then it works out better. But that's our normal model.
That's amazing. It almost seems too good to be true.
Well, I've only been doing it since 1999, so it's my sole source of income. So, and I'm happy, I've got great references. If you want to go to CEO, if you want to go to ParkingWhisper.com. I've had, I've had the honor of doing about 200 professional sports venues. We've done a lot, we've done a lot of work with Olympic committees. You know, I ran all the Olympics in Vancouver, Canada, and London, England, and some other areas. And I'm also a subject matter expert on technology. In fact, I'm actually going to be in New Orleans next week testifying against a different company that did some not-good things, and somebody's looking to make a few million dollars from them. So I'm not always the most popular guy because I try to be transparent. I ran the city and county of Denver for two years, so I've been on municipal side as well. And I got to tell you, I've really enjoyed the council meeting tonight because it reminds those of us that live in larger cities sometimes that, you know, this is the heartbeat of America, these city councils, and I really appreciate all the work that you guys are doing, especially so many volunteers.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
Okay, sir, thank you.
Thank you. We're just down the road through Thursday. If there's anything else we can do to help you, just let me know. Thank you very much, and we will.
So Jan, I think what we need from, maybe from you, Jan and Troy and whoever's involved with this, I think we need for you to really look at all the various options, crunch it for us and give us a recommendation.
Exactly. The point is.
We have been really given a lot of information to.
Apple, oranges, and oranges.
Yeah.
It's all mixed up. So I will put together a chart, thank you.
We're the apples.
Thank you very much. Mayor White, thank you, or Mayor White, Mayor Green, thank you, whoever you are out there.
Good to see you again.
Bye, safe travels.
Thank you. Thank you.
And my department, we're probably still in our 1440s company. This company, I'll go to the kiosk, and there's like future, so I'll try and make it as clear as possible.
Well, you, I think on the lead with staff, done a great job of bringing to council the various options and ideas. And I almost feel like it's information overload right now.
It is, it is.
Where are we going? Okay. Okay, we have a couple council members that need a short break. Let's break for just five minutes, okay? And then we'll get to presentations by our staff members. Okay, I'd like to call back to order. For the record, we took about a 10-minute break from 7:15 to 7:25. So we're back in action. And we're at Agenda Number Eight, where we have our department reports. Please be advised that immediately after Agenda Item Number Eight, we will discuss Agenda 234, which we removed from the consensus agenda by request of various council members. So Ms. Odom, we're at Number Eight. We'll put it in order if you want to do it.
I'm going to let you do that first. I'll go ahead and ask Troy.
Yes, thank you, Council. Real quick, just two or three topics here. As you can see, the Cedar Street, High Street project is moving along, okay? We have, Andy and I have a change order to review in the morning, and I will be meeting in the field with the engineers, assistant staff members, just to go over the project current condition. Also, as we know, the Blue Cove, Blue Cove is starting up next week, but Father Paul brought it to my attention, they have an event scheduled for October. We'll be talking to him to make sure that the contractors, if they are still in that area around the first week, we'll do that. It came to, was a surprise to me today. Other than that, I don't have any related updates. I did get the same report you got from Rambo Springs Art Group, and we'll take that into consideration for the budget process. Okay? Okay, thank you. Ms. Odom?
I'm asked, and also, what I put in front of you was results of the survey. Take a look at this, we have, um, I want to say, I'm going to enter, Georgina and Michelle for coming for your survey. And I have a little matrix that I'll go over, and it's kind of all like my question. We had 37 respondents, not only were Danell's city residents, they hail from Gainesville to downtown. And for me, I have a call. We have 37, we have seven first-time visitors, first-time visitors, and 30 recurring visitors. Three weekly visitors. Of the returning user, 12 use the boat rent rent less than 10 times weekly. And 17 use it greater than 10 times. For current method of payments, we have a contract that will replace the majority, 14 prefer the kiosks. But then there's 7 users are okay with you on road, and then nine are okay with the text. Preferred payment frequency, 20 prefer daily pass, and then nine prefer daily. Based on how often we visit, and some are not sure. That's why I remember those, all people just said, because some didn't respond. We had five, speaking to us, we had five users who say, we go well elsewhere, we charge our fee.
Well, that's what you're saying.
And one user, from the end, said, that's great, from the end, charges, they charge our air. So we have pretty used to compete. It's not something you can. We have users who didn't ever have reference, they daily prefer the annual pass. Two users, two users had no payment reference. One user did have a preference, but he didn't have that, and said, that's just a non non non. So even though there's a lot of questions, I, more or less, we did have questions, I kind of paraphrased them. But this, I think, gives you an idea of what you're trying to look at. Yeah, I just told them, I heard users, so the tax, key offer, and there were a lot of those that, maybe retired or in that, interacted, were more interested.
We can.
So I think when I put this matrix together, just to show you the costs and the options that you have, then you'll be able to decide, I want them to have the, for your requirement. So hopefully, what I possess here, you should have, will give you a clearer picture of your decision.
Thank you. Thank you, Georgina.
Any comments?
Thanks, Mr. Odom.
This, although it's very brief, there are some real jumps to this. I mean, some real jumps. The idea of the 37 respondents, not a single one living in Danell. That is really big time. That shows you that people from outside of our tax base are not contributing to the city, are coming into the city and using our facilities basically for free. So to implement this by the survey, although I'm sure there are certain city residents, you can come to the conclusion that to put a fee onto this, you're basically attaching that fee to people that are outside the city that are not supporting the city. I know they come in and buy gas and whatever, but we know how that works. Maybe they buy gas, maybe they don't. So I find that really astounding because one of the pushbacks I've gotten on this is, well, the people that live in the city, they're not getting the spoke for it. Well, it doesn't appear that that's going to be a big number, although I'll admit there are some. I find it kind of interesting how many people would prefer a yearly annual fee rather than... So that suggests to me those that do use the ramp are using it quite often.
They just prefer the news to somebody visits from, let's just think of a couple times a year, they just want to have a pass to show them, basically.
Yes. So you have 20 that have the annual pass, nine daily, so that means...
Almost like all 17, or the 10 times more a year, or I would want the annual.
Twice as many people would rather have the annual pass than the daily fee. And then the kiosk, it's kind of interesting where you have 20, 20, 30, 30 respondents?
37.
37? Seven plus 14 is 21, plus nine is 30. So add it to 30, 14 want the kiosk, and seven want the code, and nine want the tax. So it's almost like it's close to 50/50 how people want to pay, whether they want to pay technology or they just want the old-fashioned. And I bet you, you are right, the younger you are, the more you want technology.
And that's interesting.
Yeah. Well, this is very brief, but like I say, there's some, there's some good stuff in here. And the main thing that just jumps out at me is how many people are using our facilities that do not live within the city. I think that's, we all feel a little bit sensitive about taxing or putting fees on our own residents. So this is, thank you, Jan. Who came up with this idea? This was great, I think you did this. Yeah, thank you.
And then we, the fees will, discussion of the fees was, I had, um, you know, the options, all those, which we may prefer, and which is technology, whether it's just kiosks or more technologies, and then you can assign a fee, and they generally cover that on, and maybe for further, so, or fees you're charging, they will not cover the maintenance costs as well as the cost of a program itself, you know, for us to be able to set aside a little bit of money to maintain the restaurants, to even pay the water bill on the restaurants. So that may be adjustable, but, you know, that's for a further discussion.
Well, if these fees were discussed 10 or 15 years ago, they'd probably be a little controversial. They've just been pretty much done almost everywhere. We're actually eyeball by not charging anything.
I think they've been acting, because they didn't get it free for so long, and now, you know, trying to get mainstream, and really to cover the costs. We're not looking to make profits, any so-called profit, they're going to write back into the government, and then they found out what cost.
I mean, things that Troy has thrown out to me is the idea of trying to come up with money not only to maintain the boat ramp and the facilities, but the possibility of building a, a... Right? Right now, they're using the bank of the river, and it's eroding the riverway, causing damage to that area. There's, to me, total justification to move forward with this. Okay, thank you. So, Sodan?
Just wanted to give you an update, that cloud permit, our new software for permitting, planning and code enforcement. We had the first kickoff meeting last week, it went very well, so we're in the implementation area. We'll hopefully have something sorted out by, I would say, a month from now. So, that said, we had 24 permits processed in the month of July. We had four new commercial, 17 new residential, and one new business, and that is the barbecue food vendor at Advance Auto. It's the new second Bethel Baptist Church. And as far as code enforcement, we have year-to-date 111 cases. We have 12 that are currently open and we're working on, and 20 that we need to send the second letter, the second notice to. That pretty much concludes my department head calls.
Any comments, questions?
It's a, it's called, it's a barbecue food vendor, but it's at the Advance Auto. So it's, yeah, it's, it's one of those food vending. Right, right. And they just acquire their permit to.
And I, just as a compliment, I had an electrician that apparently spoke with you the other day, and he gave your department high marks on answering the questions and getting some information to them very fast, and he said it was a pleasure working with y'all, so I just want to thank you on that.
Thank you, it's our pleasure.
Georgie, I just have one question for you. When we first started to implement the code enforcement a few months ago, we knew, and certainly there was some pushback, because we were enforcing things that people didn't have to worry about being enforced for many years. What we hear often is, I've been doing this for 10 years, no one's ever said this before. Why do I have to change the way I've been doing things? It's never, ever been that way. And we knew when you started enforcing codes, it's going to be said, and it will continue. So my question is, we got a lot of pushback initially a few months ago when we started the initiative. How, now that the word is out that we're starting to do this, are we still getting the same amount of pushback, or are people kind of understanding what's going on? What's, is there any difference between now and three or four months ago?
No, it's pretty much the same. People are still saying those things, and all we ask is for your support, full support on this, because we're going to continue getting, you know, it's going to continue to happen if we try to enforce the code when it was never done before. But all we can do is explain and tell them this is what...
Are there certain areas of the codes that you're kind of focusing on? Are there certain areas of the city, or is it just random all over the city? Or we're going to look for vehicles, big trucks that are in the driveway, or we're looking for people with a blue tarp on their roof? Is there a system of what we're trying to do, or is it just kind of like, just go like, put a hunting dog out there and say, go find the rabbit?
No, we have, our code enforcement officer is targeting different sections of the city to make sure that we cover that section and then go on to the next and so forth. But we are tackling, like, for example, trash in the yards, yards that are uncapped, trucks, commercial trucks in wrong places, you know, residential areas and such, things of that nature. But we're trying to target things that the code is clearly defined, because we have so many code sections that are not clearly defined, and that's where we found roadblocks. So we are trying to tackle the ones that are completely and clearly defined, so we don't have any issues enforcing it. And we have talked to Mandy about possibly working on the sections, the code areas that need, that need corrections, at least twice per week, two hours per week, per day, or something like that, so that we can really narrow it and focus on those sections and get it done. We're hoping that with the new software that we have implemented, once it's fully running, we're going to have a little more time to focus on these things that need attention. So I'm really looking forward to having the software completely fully run, you know, fully implemented so that we can tackle this and really get it to a good point where we can really enforce.
Because it would seem to me from a public perception point, there has to be a perception of fairness that we're enforcing the codes citywide, we're enforcing them not in certain areas and not, in certain areas and not others. You know, there just has to be, you know, a sense that, I don't care, it doesn't make, whether I live in Blue Cove, or I live in Watts Springs, or I live on Palmetto Way, if you violated the code, you're just as likely to get a letter.
And that's definitely understood. We are targeting the entire city, but we have to start somewhere.
Right.
And with only one code enforcement officer working part-time, there's only so much...
So you know where I'm going, because I'm just kind of speaking out loud. You get a letter or a code violation. I get a letter from a code violation. But I know three blocks down, someone else is doing exactly the same thing, and they never, they haven't gotten a letter. I got mine two or three months ago. So it just creates that, well, wait a second, you know, why did I get one, and why didn't John Smith, who you can see from the road, he has exactly what I did, and he's not getting the letter? So, you know, part of this code enforcement thing is the perception of it a little bit, compliance. compliance, you know? I know what you're going through. The other comment I want, I want you to expound on it, as you did say, you want to make sure council gives backing to this. I have tried my best to just have hands off on this, like, this is not my area, you know, it's staff's. You feel that council has not been supporting you in, in your efforts?
Um...
I mean, I've heard complaints, I've heard complaints, and people have come to me with complaints, but basically, I say it's between you and, and, and the code enforcer, so...
Right, and, and, and overall, you've been very supportive, but there have been certain situations where, um, where I need full support. I, I need people to understand that if we're, you know, enforcing the code, this goes all the way, because we need to, we need to, to, to stay strong. You know, they need to know that we are, that we are the, the...
You're working under the directive of the city council.
Exactly.
Understand.
And so that's, that's all...
Well, let, let us know what council can do to make you feel you have our support, if you're feeling that you're kind of out there by yourself, uh, I don't know.
Well, for the most part, I mean, if, if, um, people reach out to you and, and ask, uh, or, or say anything, just, uh, refer them back to us, because we know exactly what to tell them and how to handle the situation, so, um, you know, that, that would be great.
That'd be like someone complaining about getting a traffic ticket. I can listen to that, I could, I feel sorry that happened to you, but you, you need to go talk to Lieutenant Yoxer, the chief, you know, I, I, don't talk to me about it, right? So I'm fully supportive of the police, but I don't get into that. Okay, well, well, uh...
Thank you.
I think that's a good point to refer it back to you.
Yes.
And if someone has an issue, at that point, they can always then come in front of the entire council, at a council meeting, and plead their case, correct?
Exactly, I absolutely agree with you.
Okay, I got it, I got it. Okay, anything else?
Thank you, that'll be all.
All right, that's the, uh, the department head reports, and it's like I said, we're going to backtrack a little bit.
Mr. Mayor, we have one other question that's very annoying.
I have one more thing.
Oh, okay.
Um...
That's right. Oh, yeah, what you say tonight?
Oh, yeah. Um, I would have asked Loretta or Cory to probably, uh, go over this with you guys, but they'd probably be a whole lot better at it than me, but in the, um, the timeframe that it was taken for them to get out, so we could continue the presentations, I just figured I'd touch on it real quick. So, um, they, uh, the TDC is partnering with the Chamber and the city, and Bike Florida, to bring an event, a Bike Florida event to town.
Do that again?
In October, um, to coincide with the music festival. So they will come in, um, they'll be here Friday, October fourteenth through the sixteenth. They're still, um, finalizing their routes, where they're going to, um, ride every day. We should have that by the end of the week, they said. They're also going to have a tent at the, um, festival with materials and things, and they are also donating a bicycle repair station that I believe is going to go in at Blue River Park. Um, I looked it up online, and it's kind of neat, um, so it, it's got, um, Phillips and standard screwdrivers, two steel core tire levels, headset pedal wrench, Torx T2, T25 tool, and hex key set. And they said that they're also, before they install it, they're going to wrap it, and it'll have the city logo on it, along with Bike Florida logo on it. That sounds pretty awesome.
It is. Is Loretta Shaker on top of this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, we're, um, we had a meeting last, uh, I think it was August the first, uh, we've been doing some virtual meetings with Bike Florida, and we have another one coming up soon, but we haven't finalized the date yet, so between staff, where Gina's involved, um, Michelle's been helping me out with some of the stuff, keeping me informed, um, the Chamber's involved, and the TDC is very involved also.
Excellent.
Okay, that's all I have, and Shane, do you have anything on TD?
Go ahead.
Okay. All right, we can move on.
Okay. Now we go back to, we're going to readdress item number two. Vice Mayor asked that to be removed. I asked number three to be removed, and Councilwoman Covage asked that number four be removed for additional discussion, so Vice Mayor, number two, it's all yours.
All right, I will try and keep this very short and sweet, um, and as we always say, we're not allowed to talk to everybody outside of the meeting, so that's why we're bringing it up to you. Um, we, every year, have to do evaluations, we now have to do the Chief of Police evaluation, and we have to do, um, our city clerks' evaluation regardless of what their names are, those two positions are now a responsibility of the city council to do the evaluations. It is in our Code of...
Code of Conduct.
Code of Conduct, thank you, um, where it states that council is to do that. For a, um, last year, all five council members did, um, fill out, late, I might add, Ms. Odom's, um, evaluation. So we had a year to know the evaluation that we, we do. This year, uh, the mayor chose not to fill out for evaluation. He has done that in the past as well, on other, um, employees' evaluations that we were supposed to do back in the past, but focusing today on this one, um, I don't believe it is fair to our staff to not do our duties, because we can't tell anybody how they are doing if we do not take the time to fill out these evaluations. If you don't like the evaluation, we have a year to change the evaluation, or to address the evaluation. I know for a fact that evaluations are, uh, completed in every form of government, um, most employees, um, you know, with the county, I know for a fact that you fill out a questionnaire about your own evaluation, you hand that in, and then your manager gives you your evaluation, and of course, you can comment on it. I would, I think that is not doing our jobs. I know we gave some, the mayor gave some, um, uh, goals, but, you know, you can't eat cake and, you know, have your cake and eat it too. Um, you know, it's our job to give, for, for anybody in that position, their evaluation. If you don't like it, let's talk about it, let's redo the evaluation process, but to not do that job that we are given, we're not given a whole bunch of things that we have to do, and that's one of them. So I would, uh, request that you please go ahead and for her permanent file, I used to hear that when you were high school, the permanent file, um, that you do go ahead and fill it out that way, she does know, and, and anyone else does. We all took the time, I take it very personal, and I, I worked on it for a very long time, and I think all of us do, um, I just think it's, um, a tad disrespectful to Ms. Odom not to fill that out, okay?
Just, just a comment on that, and number one, I agonized over this decision for a couple weeks. My rationale to it, and you're right, you know, it's something I'm supposed to do, so I'm not debating on that. My rationale is that the ma-, it's tied into a pay race, a permanent pay race, and I perceive this merit more as a bonus for a job well done, which means there should be no expectation by the employees to get a, a bonus. Anything that you get should be, wow, I appreciate the bonus. But the way this thing is actually perceived throughout staff is I'm expected to get my three percent. And any critique that would drop me less than three percent is something that I feel, I would feel bad about, that I didn't get my full three percent. What impacted me was what happened with the chief's evaluation last year. His evaluation came at less than three percent, he got 2.5. Chief wasn't real happy about getting 2.5 rather than three percent. As a matter of fact, council tried to negate that total and overrule it and give him the three percent anyway. So there was an attempt by council to ignore council's tabulation, and by a three to two vote, council said, "No, that evaluation, the way it was termed in, stays. You can't undo the evaluation." So based on that, when I was tabulating Mandy's score, she was going to get, in my opinion, what would normally be an outstanding evaluation. But for her to lose a half a percentage point would be for her to get eleven superiors, which means the best you can possibly get, and five fours, or five threes, which is excellent, but not superior. So with, with eleven superiors and five excellence, she would have actually got a 2.5 rather than a three. And so based on that, I'm saying, I'm wanting to give Mandy an excellent evaluation, according to my tab, which her, she's going to get a 2.5, and that would be, uh, normally looked at as, it has been, it's been demonstrated by council's action, and what happened last year, that that would be perceived as a negative. So what I did is I broke down with Mandy all the pluses and all the minuses of what I perceived of her performance for the year. I sat down with her in the office for forty-five minutes, and we went over it, line by line by line. But you are right, I know I'm supposed to fill that out, but I just don't like, I just don't like how it's looked at once we fill it out.
And I, and I'll agree with you on that, um, I know, you know, and very quickly, that evaluation on the chief's part, there were some things that people didn't understand, and there was some, there was, it's, it's, uh, it's some situations that were not normal, and that's probably why that took place, but again, um, and if there is some notes that you gave, Mandy?
Yes, uh, the mayor came in and sat down with me, and he did, um, provide me with a lot of comments.
So is that public records?
It's, it's incorporated into the evaluation.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, the, and, and just for the record, I, I, this was completely a surprise to me. I didn't complain about anything, because it really didn't affect me, either what...
I'm not saying that this was me, because I know that, you know, I'd love to give everybody five percent raises, or, and of course, everybody since, I mean, what was it, I made $3.16 when I started working, and my first raise was 10 cents an hour, and I thought I'd hit the jackpot. Even today, my husband gets his evaluations, just add his, and yes, he'd love to get his highest mark, he'd give an extra high rate, but it's not guaranteed, so it's, you know, it's not a bonus. Anyway, so I just think, um, from now on in the future, if we don't like this evaluation form, let's change it, let's fix it, but let's not leave it blank, thank you. Can't hear. You, you need to speak into your mic, sweetie. You, you need to speak into your mic.
As loud as I can, I heard your mic to hear me. I'm sorry, I didn't even realize that he did not do the evaluation until you just said so.
He didn't just not do it. What he chose not to do...
I didn't see comments.
If you look at the, the scoring here, he just chose not to pick a number.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was looking at now.
And so, when you just choose not to pick a number, then the rest of the scores are averaged together.
Okay.
Um, so then, but in the, in the goals, he commented in the goals, and he commented in...
Yeah, I know, yeah, I did, I did see that.
Uh, in, in several different areas, so I just want to be clear, it's not like he didn't do it at all, he just chose not to assign a number to each category.
Yeah, and when I, when I reviewed this, I saw the comments, I just didn't pay attention to the fact that he didn't do the numbers until now, I pulled it up again.
And that, those are just, that's just mine? Thank, thank you.
We, Vice Mayor, we have common ground with us.
Okay.
Um, and just, and just so everyone knows, I actually, when I got done with my evaluation of Mandy, I let her evaluate me. And she gave me a two. Honestly, girl, she did.
Can we have a comment on this?
Now, considering that really didn't reduce my $4.07 a day, I didn't take any exception to that. You'll, you'll have a chance a little bit. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And Vice Mayor, I did wrestle with some track. I saw Mandy at the eleventh hour, and I said, "I, I got to talk to you."
Well, again, I'd like for us to, and my whole purpose is, if we don't like this, let's change it. Can you have a public comment?
Okay.
No, not, not until after the end, till the public, is what you said.
Well, you, you're ready to take a public comment before you vote on it.
Are we, are we to vote? Oh, we have to vote on it?
It's all off the set, so now you have to actually have a separate...
Okay, thanks, all right, you are correct, thank you very much. Julianne, thank you. Would you like to comment?
I would.
Thank you very much, I didn't realize this was coming down to a vote, there it is.
Julianne Mendonza, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. And, you know, Valerie, I heard you say the situ-, the situation isn't normal, and I had reviewed the comments of everybody in the evaluation before this meeting, and I'll make the same comment that I made last time we reviewed the chi-, did the chief's evaluation, that I think, um, most of us, as working professional people, are held to standard of achievable goals, um, in performance evaluations at our employers. So I have standards and percentages and numbers and projects that I need to meet, uh, both at the mid-year and at the completion of the year, and I would really like to see this evaluation overhaul into something that is, um, less subjective, and something that has some measurable goals, so that we can see outcomes. And, you know, there's a lot of, um, there's actually some comments in here that I think could be, could be translated into measurable outcomes, and I think that would be a great way to gauge, um, salary incentives, uh, but a lot of it is just, you know, you're good at it, we appreciate it. I'd like to really see something measurable, thank you.
But anyone else like to do a comment from number two? Yes, you agree. Mayor, which mayor? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Walter, I have an air problem.
Say it.
Walter Green, 19090, St. Augustine Drive, Nellin, Florida. Evaluations have always been an issue, all the way back when I served, uh, as councilman, vice mayor, and then mayor. When you have a policy, and the policy dictates compliance with the policy, that's the best route to take. When you start varying from your set responsibilities, you're opening the door for problems. Comply with the instructions of the evaluations. If I were here, which I'm not, but if I had someone of Mandy Odom's qualities working for me currently, I would be one big happy camper. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mayor, if I have permission? Yes, absolutely, sir.
Yes, absolutely, sir. R. Fisher, 11897 North Ohio Street, Nellin, Florida. I've never heard Walter say anything that didn't make a lot of sense. Thank you, Walter. I don't want to call you ma'am or miss, but I, I think everybody really does agree with her, and I would suggest that perhaps, you could give them some examples, quite seriously, as to the metrics. Pretty much any organization needs metrics, we all know that in our heart, nothing else. And I've been on the receiving end, not the giving end, or I would do some of that too. So if you would, if you just take two or three of them.
You need to speak to them, I think that you need to speak.
Or if you have.
Yes, sir, you have to talk to us. Yeah.
Sure, that's all I'm suggesting. It's easy to suggest, it's hard to implement. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, very good. Anyone else? Okay, public has, has spoken. Council has made a comment. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve the evaluation?
I move that we accept Ms. Odom's evaluation for effectiveness, or what am I saying?
Just approve as is.
Yeah, that works.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimously. Okay, now we backtrack to number three, which I pulled off the consent agenda. I just wanted some clarification on this. It appears that this is tied in pretty strongly to the Ken Odom study, the Kimberly Horn study, where he had ideas, what we could do with this building that is much different than what we're currently doing right now. So we're applying for a grant that will redo our roof and request a study from Kimberly Horn to deep drive into what the integrity of City Hall building, structure, and what it would take to harden and enhance the existing structure so that it could potentially withstand a second floor in the near future. Part of the proceeds of this grant would help in developing this study, which would be used for future grants and building a beautiful community center. So where I'm at right now is, we seem to be applying for a grant that I don't recall city council ever getting on board, changing this building or using this building in a way that Ken Odom, is that his name, Metcalf?
Ken Metcalf.
Metcalf? Suggested that, that was some suggestions that he made that I think were widely rebuffed by council. So I'm, I'm just kind of curious why we're heading in this, in this direction.
Well, just, just to clarify, I'm not going off of Mr. Metcalf's study on that. That was just based on a, a suggestion that you made for a community center. You all want to have, to see a community center within the city, and it was my vision that maybe it would be good to reinforce this building and have a community center upstairs. If that is something you don't want, then we can reroute those funds and do something else that is more productive and that you want to see. But I'm just going off of your recommendation to, to have a community center within the city limits, and you had mentioned about having it at the Soul Harbor Church at one point, and then you said something about having it somewhere, but didn't know where. So this was just a vision of mine, maybe we could have one here, since we have the water right behind us, and we can have a really nice community center upstairs with some kind of railing that people can go out, a veranda where people can go out, view the river, and it just comes from an idea that I saw at the city of Lake Worth, where I, where I worked before. They have, and just so you know, give you a little history, they have a casino building that was an old history building, a historic building, and they reconstructed that casino and did, they, they had retail stores in the bottom floor and did a community center on the top floor. That community center serves as an event site that people love to go to, and now they, I mean, they've moved into all kinds of projects with this center, and it creates a lot of revenue for the city. So, you know, up to the point where they hired a new events coordinator to do events on that, on that floor. And so it seemed like a good idea to do something like that here, maybe not to the extent of, of getting revenue from it, because maybe because we have City Hall here, we might not be able to, I don't know what the precautions of that would be. That would be something that the city attorney will have to clear out for us before we do anything like that. But it's definitely a good idea to have a community center upstairs and maybe have it as a, you know, a.
Well, I think, forgive me, my, my, my point is not whether it's a good idea or a bad idea, it may be a fantastic idea, but these sort of things need to be generated from city council. I mean, this was rushed upon, but city council did not spend any time really digging in deep on these concepts. So the conversation and the exploration they're having right now needed to be done before we do this, to make sure this is something city council wants to do. So no, it might be the greatest idea in the world, but it has to be run through city council before we go straightforward with something like this.
Okay, and this was a preliminary idea to do, to apply for the grant. What was going to entail that whole grant process and what, what we can do was just a suggestion, but it's, I mean, it's up to you if you want to.
See, like, right now, I, I, I learned quite a bit just listening to you for the last 10 minutes. So now if you say, okay, now that you've heard my presentation, you want to apply for the grant, I'd be prepared to say yes or no. I wasn't prepared to say yes or no until I heard what you had to say.
Understood.
Right?
So when you gave, because I remember you talking about the veranda Wednesday, but I thought this was more of the, for the new roof. And then while we're doing the new roof, we could also get a, Kimberly Horn to do a study to see if the building would ever be able to have a second story. Wasn't that how you described it last Wednesday?
At the initial meeting, I said a roof as an example of what can be done, but Troy and I were discussing different ideas. Like, we, we discussed the possibility of, of using the money for an AC equipment, because the city's, uh, City Hall AC equipment might give up soon, so that was a possibility. We need new carpeting, we need paint, we need, we wanted to do a mural outside, so all those details were gonna be taken into account, and then a grant was gonna be prepared that would address what, what the grant entails, and then, and then take it from there. And as a matter of fact, just so you know, I did speak with Ms. Schaefer, and she's on board. She said that she will bring it back to the county for them to approve, her to do a letter of support for us, for this grant, and she said that she'll get me in contact with her grant coordinator, so that he can help us do a really good, solid plan. So.
For the upstairs community center or for a new roof?
For the $50,000 grant, whatever that is gonna cover, and that, that would, that would be something that I will bring back to you and, and give you suggestions.
I'd like, I'd like to make comments on this.
Yes, please.
I, I think you're just taking the ball and try to bat it out of the park, when we should be bunting because of our fiscal responsibilities that this city has, and we already have projects that are in place, and to talk about putting a, a second story on and so on, and engaging Kimberly Horn, and then what? Okay, we're talking about, how much is that ceiling on this grant, 50,000? Is that correct? I think that's what the, what I was sent.
The roof, the roof might not be the whole 50,000. The grant is 50,000. The roof might be 30,000.
Okay, we, we can't go anywhere with $50,000. Kimberly Horn's, uh, does the study for us for 10 grand, whatever, that, if we would get the grant, that's 40,000 left. What are we gonna use for a building, Mike? We're talking about a project, 200,000, 250,000. This, this city has a budget that is constrained, and it, we just can't go after shooting stars when we have a limited amount of money to work with. We have, we have roads, we have other projects and so on, and I, I don't see where we can go out on a limb, other than, yeah, we need a new roof, and a mural is a wonderful idea, but anything beyond that, this city cannot begin looking at that size of a project at this time. No way.
And I understand the budget does not sustain that, but I never said we had the money to build the building structure. I said we were gonna go after different grants that will provide us the funds to cater to that.
Okay, but we can't say we didn't get those grants. Also, this grant is highly, highly comparable. How many, how many Main Street cities are there that, and they're all gonna be going after this grant?
If we shared our foot before we even start, it's not taking us anywhere, but I think that if we have a vision of what we can create, it would do great for us. So that's just one step towards that.
So just real quick, I want to understand something very quickly. So we can apply for this $50,000 grant to zero the funding, and the city is due.
Correct.
You said you were going to write the grant yourself, and now, of course, the tourism said they would offer us a grant writer as well to get it. But again, we don't have to do it for a second story, we can just use it for the roof, but no offense, everybody, we're gonna need a new roof in this building before we can do a, for our insurance. I would be all in favor. If you don't try, you don't get, so it doesn't matter if there's 100 more.
The new roof is fine. Engage Kimberly Horn, and extend that project for the community center, is that?
And, and, yes, ma'am, Ms. Jan?
I have a question. This Kimberly Horn study to harden the building, wouldn't that play into us going further for another grant with FEMA for facility hardening grants?
Yes.
Where we have done a study, because FEMA, you have to do a cost benefit analysis, and you have to really agree what you're doing.
Right.
And they require, if we would harden this facility, every crack in the coats needs to be sealed and hardened, you know, for storms. So if this grant can get us a new roof, and, and maybe one of the AC units, because we have to, and apply a study that we could then go further with a facility hardening grants, justify it.
Hardening grants are fine, but not to build a second story for a community center.
All right, Ms. Covington, we're gonna have, this requires a vote too, so we're gonna have to take public comment. My position is pretty clear, Georgina. I salute you on trying to think big. And I want you to think this way. Where I'm at with this, as you can tell by the questions that the vice mayor was asking, you're trying to get clarification, what is this, is it for the roof, or what is this for? Out there in front of council, we don't know even what this is all about, and we're having it on the consent agenda for a vote. So council has to have a little bit more information before it gets to this point. That's all I'm saying. Okay? All right, do we have a public comment? Yes.
Julianne Mendonza, 11894 East Blue Cove Drive. I just want to take 10 steps back. The T Global Hometown Grant Program is meant to help fund projects to build, rebuild, or refresh community spaces that help foster local connections in your town. For example, this might include a town square pavilion, a historic building, an outdoor park, a ball field, or a library. Every town has places where friends and neighbors connect. This is the bottom line of a very simple grant, and I think that part of the problem is, I'm hearing, it was my vision. So the first line of the attachment to the agenda item is, it's community development's recommendation, and we request this grant to redo our roof. It goes on to talk about getting, using the rest of the money for the studies to build the second story. So I just can't imagine why we would apply for the grant for a roof and then for a study to put a second story on after we just put a new roof on. My biggest objection is that a roof does not speak, in my opinion, does not speak to bringing a community together. This grant is for a community space where people meet. It's the heart and the foundation of Main Street, of Main Street coming, that's gonna be an organization coming here to work with our community on new ideas. So I think it's a great opportunity to, to maybe say to the council and to the public, hey, there's an opportunity for a grant for 50,000, here's what it's all about, what, does anybody have any ideas on what might be a great idea? And maybe someone will say, put a roof on City Hall, but maybe someone will say, there's a historic project downtown that we could match the 50,000 and really get a great kickstart on Main Street. But I would ask that this is not submitted, and that we rethink it for something that could really benefit the community, to do a project in a place in our town where friends and neighbors connect. I don't think that's a roof on City Hall, I don't think it's AC equipment at City Hall, I don't think it's hardening at City Hall, and I certainly don't think that it's Ken Metcalf's idea of a second floor balcony after we put on a new roof. So it doesn't make any sense to me, I would say reject it, let's go back to the drawing board, and let's have a conversation about how our city might benefit from the grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
Georgina, when's the, I have to, tell her first. I'll go first.
Kathy Dunn, 11386, Cedric's Drive. About a year and a half, maybe two years ago, Kenneth Odom from Marion County came to speak to us about a free grant that is provided to harden buildings for hurricanes, et cetera, et cetera. I called him, well, what happened was, it seemed to me like they wanted to use that to harden the Soul Harbor Church. Now that that's off the table, I called him and I said, can we, is that still available? He said, yes. I tried to tell the mayor, Troy, everybody about this, but I can't get anybody to listen. So should we not call Kenneth Odom and see if it's still available to use for City Hall? Because I agree. Jan?
With those grants, they're FEMA grants for, for critical facility hardening. The plan was to wait to see what we were gonna do with the police department and tackle all the buildings in, in the city, all city municipal buildings. It's not a free grant, there is a match, typically 25% of all costs, and a lot of labor has to be done on Troy's part, or whoever he made assistance with, to look at the buildings and see what's it gonna take to harden that structure. For example, we went, years ago, we went for a grant for storm shutters. Well, we couldn't just, because it was FEMA's critical facility hardening grant program, we couldn't just do storm shutters. We had to plug holes, we had to mount generators, we had to do public works we couldn't do because the garage doors, sure, we were applying to replace the garage doors, but the building was not in FEMA's, I'm, I'm not trying to put this, the building was not structurally sound enough to be hardened, according to FEMA. So there's a lot of labor that does need to be done. Now that Soul Harbor Church is off the table. Now that Soul Harbor Church is off the table, we can take a look at all the buildings.
I'm not saying we should do it. I'm just saying, should we not revisit his, the possibility of this? And I don't know the details.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
So it's just a suggestion to our city council, and I understand, so let's revisit it, period. Thank you.
And I just wanted to give you a little.
Sure.
Anyone else that would like to speak to item number three on the agenda? Yes, Tom?
Tim Minsky, 12140, April Street, here in Dunellen. I don't want to rain on anybody's parade or slow down the motivation of doing this. But when I went and looked at the, at what this group has awarded already in the past, they've not awarded anything that has anything close to do with roofs, city buildings, or anything like that. So before we spend time working on this grant, it's my opinion that we're nowhere near what the, what is gonna get awarded for, for a roof. You know, we spent all this time for something that more than likely is gonna get rejected when you look at the history of what's been awarded to this grant. The time may be better spent knowing this grant is out there to look for something based on what has been awarded in the past, and see if any of those type things meet the needs of the city, and then apply for a grant accordingly. But I just don't see the history where they're gonna do it for a roof.
Georgina?
If I may answer that, there are two settings, one in Mississippi, Oxford, Mississippi, and one in Jakes Center, Kansas. The Oxford, Mississippi, was to transform and underutilize space in Oxford's Courtyard Square into a new park that offers residents and visitors a place to gather. And then there was a Jakes Center, Kansas. They renovated a community center basement for expanded community and business incubators use. So that's pretty much, I'm saying, the line that I was trying, and this, what I was trying to promote was the possibility of creating a gathering place for communities. That's, that's pretty much what the whole object was being entertained for.
Anyone else that would like to speak to this? Okay, let's have a couple more council comments, and then we'll bring it to a vote.
I'd like to comment on the, why don't, why don't we look at what we already have as far as community gathering places, see if we can expand one of them. Troy, the park across from your buildings.
Bernie Mills.
Bernie Mills, thank you, very important. There, is there, I haven't been there a while. When there are groups gathering there, is there a, a stage there of any kind? Could that not be expanded into like a grant, a bandstand or something like that? To accommodate entertainment events? We have so many people here in our area that are great performers. If we, if we established a bandstand, and I'm, I'm thinking Saratoga Springs, New York, the bandstand they have in, in their Congress Park, every Saturday night, they, if it's not raining, they have a, a band of some kind playing, and people just gather, and they bring the food vendors, and it's a celebration. How about something like that, folks?
I would agree that there's opportunity at some of the parks to use grant money like this, and also opportunity in the historic district to enhance things around the city. So if council would like for us to work together and come up, come back with a different idea, something that'll fit within the scope of acceptance of the grants, as pointed out by Tim Minsky and a few others, then I think we'd get something on the agenda for next month. October 1st is the deadline?
October 1st, yes.
Let's do that.
So Georgina, let's, let's give you a fair, fair shake on this. Let's, let's walk through this. I'm, I'm trying to grasp what you're trying to do, and I'm trying to let you know I appreciate what you're trying to do. So there, there's a possibility of getting a fifty thousand dollar grant if we apply for it, correct? And you're, you're willing to do the legwork to apply for it?
Yes, sir.
There's no expense to the city to apply for it?
No.
Okay. So we either get it or we don't get it. So let's think positively. We get it. So we get a fifty thousand dollar grant. So now that we have it, it's kinda like we caught the bear. Now what do you do with the bear, right? Why don't you catch it? So we got fifty thousand dollar grant, what do we, what do we do now? What do we do? Is the next step, we get ahold of Kimberly Horn, and then we hire them to do a study? Is that the next step?
Mm-hmm.
And we know that's, you know, that's twenty-five, twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars, right? That's usually what it costs.
About ten, fifteen thousand.
So the real benefit for us, if everything goes well, is to get awarded the fifty thousand, which will probably spend the majority of that on hiring somebody to do a study. And we know that those studies, we know what, we paid twenty-five thousand and thirty-five on our last two studies. So I'm just trying to think, and if the study comes back and conceptualizes some great idea to put a second story on the building, we've been struggling for four years about a police station. Where in the world would we go with a study that would give us a blueprint on how to do that? I'm just trying to think forward on this.
Well, the study will be, like Jan said, it would help with the, with, with a FEMA grant to go forward with a, with building a community center here. And from what I was, you know, researching, it would be about ten, fifteen thousand for the study. And then we'll have remaining balance to do other things to enhance the building. I mean, this is a gathering place. We have meetings here, and it would all ride into that.
So usually when you apply for a grant, you have to be very point specific to what you'll use it for.
Right.
So we'd have to spell out exactly what we want to use it for. So if something did come up that was different than what we applied on the grant, we really couldn't use that money in that way, correct? It's not like you're, like, we can say, well, we can always build the roof. If you can't do that, we can build it. It doesn't seem like that's the way it works.
No, we would have to create a definite plan.
So now we can flip back to what Troy's saying. The idea is a good one, apply for the grant, right? But Troy's saying, let's make sure we fill out the form properly, what we want to use that money for. And I think then, I think we've got something to talk about. But to put on there, put on there, the, a part of the reason is to build a second story on this building when we know we don't have the financial capability of doing that. And we, but then once we look on that, that's the way we have to spend it. Kinda chasing a rabbit down a hole, in my, you know, the way it looks to me. Anyway, that's just my comments on that.
I mean, I don't mind us going for a grant if we can get the new roof and get the hardening.
That does not fit the contention of the grant. Read the grant.
Vice Mayor, have a floor.
If.
Will be next.
Excuse me, thank you. Georgina, if we could do it, if it's in the scope of the grant, to do it with the roof and the hardening of the building, that we could get the FEMA, that I am fully on board with. If that were your professional opinion, that we could maybe, in a long shot, have a shot at that. If we don't try something that doesn't cost us money, I don't mind. But if it's gonna cost us money, if you're not gonna have the time to do it, you know, then that's where I would have, I, I'd love the idea of the community center up top, but at this point, I mean, I think we need to spend our focus on the police department. But yes, I, I can envision, I see your vision, and I applaud it. Thank you.
May I talk again?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Just going back, back to what Mayor White said. When you apply for a grant, there has to be a line item expenditure attached to the grant. You can't be wishy-washy about what you're gonna do. And this grant specifically states that it's for some, building of some facility or expanding of an existing facility as a community meeting place, whether it be culture, largely cultural. Okay, go back and read the grant. Grants have stipulations. If you send in that grant, you know where it's gonna go, and I, I'm not gonna miss words. It's gonna go in the garbage can, it's gonna come back with a reject stamp on it as fast as they can send it back to you, because you're not looking at what the grant is going to provide, specifically what the grant is focused on. Okay, that's the way grants go. Oh, I mean, and it doesn't, when I was a high school teacher, I applied for grants, and those grants had to be approved by the school board. I had to send in itemized, line by line, budget. And I had to have vendors verified, and I had to have their specific, whatever contract they, we would work with them. That's what a grant is. You can't be wishy-washy and send in a wish list. And the idea of hardening the building is excellent. We should go back and look at that, is that opportunity through Mr. Odom who still exists. I'm sure he can help us with it. Yeah, but that has nothing to do with, with the grant that we're, we're looking at through Main Street.
All right, Ms. Covish, let's, thank you, excellent. Let's kinda wrap this up unless, Ms. Williams, do you have anything to add? So what I, what I would suggest, council, is I think there's something to this idea, but how it's applied and what we do with it is the question. So what I would, I would suggest is we bring this back in September, and staff rework this, where we can make it a little bit more practical, something that if we are lucky enough to get this grant, we have something that's realistically doable. That's what, I think that's where we're at. Why, why get a grant if we know financially it would be, it'd be a miracle if we would have the money to do something like that?
With like three million.
Yeah. So is everybody good on bringing this back with some?
Please do.
Vice Mayor?
No, that's fine, yes. And maybe we can give you, when we have those meetings with you this week, we can give you some suggestions of things we're thinking of.
And that's exactly what I want.
Citizens.
I definitely want a meeting with each and every one of you to get your vision for the city, and what is it that you want me to work on?
See, well, we're, we're definitely appreciative. I guess you're the one that found this grant, right?
Yes.
So we don't want you to shoot you down because you found the grant, and make you feel, you know, great job, we're glad you found it, so.
I'm just bringing suggestions to you all. My job is to get it.
So where the discussion is, isn't the grant and the concept, it's just what we want to use it for.
All right. Mr. Mayor, may I ask, make a suggestion? So we're gonna table that, then, correct? Okay. She has a gentleman here regarding the city digital sign, and he has been waiting here the whole evening. Could we not be mean to you, but can we please go ahead and skip number four and go to number nine? That he might get home before ten o'clock tonight? Thank you.
You deserve, you deserve a big apology. I am so sorry. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. I did not, see, it says city digital signage, Georgina said, it doesn't say.
She, she invited a.
It's okay, I invited him so that he can give you enough.
Someone, there would be no way for council to know there was a speaker here. I'm looking at the agenda.
So he was just, I think he just, I think.
All right, so council, all right, council for, to be courteous, we're gonna delay number four, and we're going now to number nine. Okay.
I'll just do some work on these.
Okay, so Georgina, number nine?
Yes, and this is just a step closer to having a much desired community engagement. Talking about the digital signage. It will attract and retain businesses, as well as beautify our streetscape, as I had mentioned before. This will equal a much better experience to our residents, businesses, and visitors, creating a conducive ambience that attracts the overall community. So going back to what Loretta Schaefer was talking about, having that branding, having that image that, that portrays our, our, our community and what, and what we're dealing with would be very important. You all mentioned very specific things that you wanted to have featured in this, in, in the tourism website. And I think it would be great for us to have a digital signage that can feature those things. And most of the things that, that would be featured in that digital signage would not only be community meetings, but it would also be featuring things like notifying residents of Amber Alerts, emergency alerts, street closures, citywide events, hurricane weather alerts, promotions, among many other things. So this, this digital board will not only serve as, as an information for our meetings, but it would also provide information of things going on in the city constantly, so that citizens are aware of what's going on. So it would be some sort of website, additional website presence in the city. I think it would, it's important for you all to know as well, that, that it would, it would be helpful in the sense that what we have right now is a billboard. And it's, as you know, we have to be putting the information manually in there. It can pose lawsuits, because people have to get off their car to view what's in there, because it's so small, people can't see it. And they can, they can fall, they can, all things can happen, or lie. Also, staff goes out there to put those items on the billboard, sometimes it's raining. They can slip and fall too. And I mean, I'm not calling any negative things on this city, but, you know, it's, it's, it could pose a liability. So having a digital board showing all this information, it's a tool for, for staff to use. And it's a website presence where people can see right there, where they don't have to go to a computer to look at it. They have it as they pass by, so it would be ideal for the city. Again, this is another item that I bring in front of you to, for the betterment of the city. And I have invited Mr. Don Nemeth to speak on that. And I want to thank him ahead of time for being so patient. We did not make prior arrangements for this, that's why you all didn't know about it. We discussed this briefly.
Today, about one o'clock, she said. Have time this afternoon, maybe you want to swing by. My name is John Nemeth, I'm with owner of Albright Signs. We're in 3376 Pennington Court, La Canto, Florida. We are state certified electrical sign contractor specializing in digital signage for all types of businesses, corporations, municipalities. We recently did one for North Oak Baptist Church, which is right up the street here on Citrus Springs Boulevard, which I guess prompted the attention of some members of the board there. And we've done some for Citrus County, I mean, Florida Department of Health. We did a nice digital sign for them on the front of the building, which was instrumental for them, especially during COVID, because it gave a direction for people, you know, if you're feeling symptoms of COVID, please use the entrance on the right, or if you're sick, you know, and it displays the messages, you know, that people want to see. I mean, I thought I was gonna come here and try to give you guys a sales pitch on why you needed a digital sign. on why you needed a digital sign for the city, but you guys basically sold me on why you needed a digital signage just by listening to the mayor there talking about, you know, the schools, you know, schools opening. This, you know, messages could be put on this digital sign right out here, you know, please be safe, slow down, school's getting ready to be back in session, school's in session, you know, school buses, you know, everything. Even the pastor back here, Pastor Father Hamilton, about Don Ellen days, you know, you can display messages for all these people that want to, you know, get their messages out in community events, Boomtown events, you know. It can be used also for the police department, silver alerts, amber alerts, you know, missing child, something, you know, somebody's child is missing at the Walmart or something, they can call right down here. And, you know, somebody can put the message on the sign within two to three minutes, you know, missing child, you know, last seen silver, white car, whatever, you know. And other gentlemen here talking about the kid that got hurt on the jet ski, you know. Anytime that there's an event or you think it's gonna be a popular weekend, there's gonna be a lot of boaters in the area, you can put messages that they can all be saved, these templates that you can just say, hey, it's gonna be a busy weekend, let's go ahead and send this message out there. It'll be on the sign. You can say, let's start it Friday at noon, and then tell the message that Sunday at 10 o'clock should be over, and the message just automatically goes away, you know. You can say, you know, please be safe, watch your boating, be aware of underground or underwater obstructions, what have you, stuff like that. Any kind of messages you want. It's all programmable. You can program it years in advance if you even want to and have all templates that you could send out there, you know, for special events that you want to portray out there or, you know, inevitable what you want to do with it. So, yeah, I think it would be a huge event to the city for, you know, trying to get messages out. But you seem to have, just from listening here for the last four hours of what everybody was talking about, messages that everybody's trying to get out, and they just have a problem because, you know, posting your messages on websites, I mean, who's gonna sit on a website? You know, when you have a digital sign out in front, it's 100% in your face. You cannot miss it. When you drive by, you see it. Advertising in the newspaper, you know, your Boomtown festivities and all that stuff, advertising in newspapers, I mean, who reads a newspaper anymore? Very few people read newspapers. So, you know, digital LED marketing. Florida Department of Transportation uses them on the interstates to direct traffic, slow down. Next day, the 375 is, you know, backed up, you know. That's exactly what they're designed for, so...
Also, he had a mention about the resolution of the signs. So, we had recommended for... We had three quotes, and we had recommended for a quote that was offering 10 millimeter signage. In his case, he's recommending 7 millimeter signage. And I just wanted you to know a little bit of what that is and what they understand, what the difference is.
Oh, yeah. In the digital industry, the signed digital LED type signage, there's what they call a millimeter, which is the clarity of the screen. So, it's kind of the opposite, like, so the lower the number, the better the picture. So, if you were to have a 7-millimeter display, which means the LEDs would be spaced 7 millimeters apart, which would be a red, green, and blue in a matrix for a pixel, the lower the number, which means that LEDs are tighter together. So, the tighter, closer together, the better the picture. So, a 10-millimeter would be more grainy and less clear of the picture as versus a 7-millimeter. And you could go up, you know, even to 20-millimeter. Some billboards are in the 80-millimeter because they're so far away. They look good, but when you get right upon it, it would be all pixelly and grainy. So, with your situation where your speed here is, you know, 35 miles an hour, slow zone here, you know, that's about what we recommend. That's the industry standard now is about 7-millimeter. That's the same one we just did at the North Oak Church. That's what I would recommend.
What is the name of that church?
North Oak.
North Oak, and that's in Citrus Springs.
It's right on the corner of El Cam and Citrus Springs Boulevard.
Now, the sign that's there, is it a similar size to what's being recommended here?
Yeah, almost... It's exactly the same digital screen that I was proposing to you guys.
If we went over there and looked at it, we'd be looking at what we'd be recommending for here.
The digital... Georgina has a picture of the sign that I...
Yes, we have some renderings also.
I sent... That's a sample, a mock-up rendering of... I don't have... I didn't bring copies for everybody, but, you know, this was...
And it's on the back folder.
Yeah. If you wanted to see it.
So, this first one was one of the preliminary designs whenever we were first talking with the one sign company. So, this is the existing sign out front now, about one there. And this was a rendering, which was preliminary. It's not what the design, but just to give you an idea of what it would look like at that location compared to what the sign looks like today. And then there is another rendering that I have here that would be the modified sign. This is the one that...
That is the 10-millimeter signage.
Yeah.
That was quoted.
So, that was just so that you could have a visual of sort of what we were looking at.
This is the one I proposed.
Okay. Which is the same... It's the same layout.
Okay.
Yeah. I like our city logo on it.
The difference of the 7-millimeter as opposed to the 10.
Is the one at the church, is it on a... Is it up on a post-high or is it like that?
It's very similar to this one here. I don't have a rendering of that particular sign, but it's very similar. It's about seven foot to the top because of the same fact. The reason is that where they're located at El Cam and Citrus Springs Boulevard, it's a very slow zone, and everybody stops at that intersection. So, that's why we recommended a 7-millimeter display for them because it's a higher resolution. And being that it's lower to the ground, it needed to be a better resolution for pictures and clarity and images and stuff like that. You know, if it's 10 to 12 feet up in the air, it makes a difference in the distance.
So, you provide the sign, and the city would have to provide the stand that it's in and everything.
No. Only thing you have to provide is the power to the sign. We do everything. We do everything. Steel, photo excavation, engineering permitting, installation, and our computer. You have lifetime software support, and software comes with the digital sign. And I have a gentleman that works for me that is a member of a local church right up down the road here. And he comes to your facility and spends a couple hours with whoever wants to learn how to use the sign, trains you on-site of how to operate the software on the sign.
So, are you conceptualizing this sign to be where our sign is currently, which is at the entrance of our parking lot? Or are you conceptualizing this would be out on 41, capturing the traffic that's going by?
Yeah, I didn't do that rendering right there for the location, but I'm almost inclined to think it would be more beneficial to be out on 41.
Well, I know when we first discussed this, and again, this is something that was discussed, we didn't really dig deep into this.
Oh, there's the sign.
That's the North Oak Church, yeah.
It's not the best picture that I had to send it small, but they have theirs. This is theirs at North Oak, and then they've got their website down here.
I like that. I think, uh... I think Council was presuming it would be on 41 where we'd be capturing all the traffic that goes back and forth rather than having it only where people that come into the parking lot would see it. But that... There's two... There would be two decisions to make on this. Number one, do we want the sign? And if we do, where to put it?
And there's another one there, you know, the...
Georgina, that other rendering was at the wrong end of the lot. It wasn't at the north end of the lot. It was where the sign is now, the welcome sign. And I don't think we want to pull that up and leave it. What we were talking about is out on 41 to the north of the property, not where this...
Right.
So, this sign right here, is it off or is it on?
Um, that was when we just... We had just installed it. They hadn't had the power turned on to it yet. It's up and running right now. As in the last two to three weeks, they've got it powered up and...
It's at North Oak, right?
Yeah, that's it, right there, yeah. That's it.
Okay.
Take a picture and bring it back to the court, please, sir.
You know what I'll do. But I have, yeah, there's... I have a ton of them all over the town. If you want to go look at a few different ones.
And just real quick while we have you, if we did want to put it out closer to the highway, you've worked with FDOT and, you know, the setbacks and such and so forth that FDOT would require?
Normally, if, as long as it's, you know, on city property, you know, you shouldn't have to be, you know, it shouldn't have to be any requirements through DOT. Now, if you were to be, try to do an off-site sign on another piece of property that wasn't, that could be state-owned property, then yeah, DOT and the state would have to be involved. But if it's gonna be on city property, which here are on 41, which is owned by the city, then your laws would govern the location and placement.
I'm sure there wasn't because of the LED or anything. Just a thought.
Counsel, I don't feel I'm prepared to make a vote on this yet. There's too much for me to figure out.
I have comments to make. Should I hold them? Yes.
Yeah. We can move on. So, do we want to table this till next meeting?
Yes.
I mean, are you ready to vote on? We don't even know where we even want to put it.
Um, it's fine. We can table it.
Table?
Okay.
Okay. We'll table this one.
You answered a lot of questions out for me, and I'm glad you were here. I'm sorry it's so late.
That's okay.
And I should have thought to ask you to have been before I started talking. So, my apologies for not...
I should have just lurded up at the first, the beginning of the meeting and said, hey.
The dumb bears have not given me enough energy to, you know, think right. So, my apologies.
Yeah, but we're, like I said, we're local, we're right here. So, if you have any questions or need to come out or review anything or...
We'll go out... I'm looking forward to going out to church.
Yeah, definitely go take a look at it, and you'll be able to see.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
All right. So, does the public have comment on this even though it was not brought to a vote?
You don't have to accept public comment if you're not gonna vote on it.
Yeah, we can get public comment when we get the...
Put it back in the workshop for September. That way, we'll have information to give them.
All right, fair enough. All right, now we go back to number four.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And we apologize. We absolutely did not know you were sitting here.
We were sitting there.
This was a very informative meeting. I learned there's a lot of angry people in Don Ellen.
Passionate.
All right, Ms. Covish.
They need a community center, real bad.
We'll get a sign for it. That was good.
Ms. Covish, have had it number four.
Yeah. On the wayfinding signs and so on, there's no doubt about it. The idea of establishing wayfinding signs in our historic district, gateway signs and so on, something that needs to be done. I do some traveling. Gonna be hitting the road soon. And I go through all those little towns through Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, and always looking at their signage. And those roads that I take off and lead right through their historic district. So, grand idea. We just need to go about it a different way. And I understand where you're coming from. You're coming from Weston. And Weston has a budget of $49 million this year.
Well, Ms. Covish, let me interrupt you.
I'm getting there. Okay.
This, number four, was simply to reject the two bids that were up there. This wasn't to discuss whether we want to sign...
Okay, so, let's reject those bids, bring it back to the table. And there's an alternative plan that I have. I'd like to present in September that we can get these wayfinding signs without, let's put it this way, making our citizens upset by doing it in a one big project that goes beyond over 100,000, 150,000, whatever. I've called some people at other cities.
Ms. Covish. Ma'am, that's a discussion of whether we want to sign...
That's pretty bad.
This has been come up for a vote to reject, so I think we need public comment. Anyone want to comment on number four? The proposal is to reject the two bids, two offers that are after bids. Anybody want to comment on it? Okay, please note, no one has commented. Anyone else? Any council members want to? Staff is recommending to reject both bids.
Mayor?
Yes.
If you read the actual proposed motion, it is to reject both of the proposals and authorize staff to re-advertise the RFP.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So, that's my objection, that we not advertise again for bids, that we go back and do another plan.
I'll make a motion. Well, I'd like to make a motion for discussion, quick, quick discussion. Well, I guess...
Well, make a motion, we discuss after a second.
That's what I'm saying. Okay. So, I make a motion that we reject all proposals received in response to request proposal RFP 2022-03, wayfinding signage and maintenance service.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, now we have discussion.
Just real quick, I'd like for us to be, again, if we have something that we'd like to tell Georgina, who has only done what she was told to do by this council, that when we meet with her this week on our individual meetings, that we, that you give her whatever thought process you have, but she doesn't have to wait into September. And then if she comes to us in September, she can put together your plan, my plan, our plans, bring it for us, that we can discuss it in front of the public. And then at that time, we can make a recommendation to do another RFDQXYZ bid service. So, does that sound good to everybody?
Yep.
Any further discussion?
It's not advertise again.
All right, so, we have a motion in a second to adopt number four as it is. Voted in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Nay.
It passes 3-1.
I don't think we should be re-advertising to collect this.
We didn't re-advertise it.
What?
We didn't. We're not re-advertising it.
She did not include that piece in her motion and suggested that we just reject the proposals and bring it back to Council in September. That was my motion.
Okay.
Yeah, to reject it and bring it back in September.
As it states here, to request for...
That's not the motion that I said.
Okay.
She stopped at maintenance services. So, in the proposed motion, she stopped at maintenance services.
Okay, excellent.
And suggested that we gather some more information from council members individually and then bring it back to the September workshop.
Got it. Okay. Okay.
Yeah. So, are you... Can she still... Can she change her vote, Andrew?
If she wishes to correct and the board retains it, absolutely.
Yay.
So, what exactly... I don't understand how Ms. Covish got involved with this. I thought we were acting on the vice mayor's motion.
Her motion was to reject all proposals received in response to the request for proposal RFP 2022-03, wayfinding signage and maintenance. End of motion.
Stop.
Okay.
Nothing about... Got it.
She did not include and authorize staff to re-advertise and suggested...
Okay, so, we can make two separate motions?
No, there's... No. Ms. Covish didn't understand that I did, that I cut off the bidding thing.
I didn't understand that.
She voted against what she wanted. So, I just made it clarify that I said what she wanted. Why the heck does she vote against me? So, now she's not voting against me.
I didn't understand that we're not re-authorizing the bidding process.
Exactly. Right.
I think we're good, Mayor. The... What appears happened is the motion that was made incorporated the first part of the recommended motion, but not that last part. And it would seem that there was a misunderstanding that that was included in the original motion. And once that was cleared up, you have an unanimous counsel, and it was made clear that Councilwoman Covish wished to vote in that way. So, you now have a unanimous decision.
Okay, very good. All right. Please excuse us a second. It does get late. All right, we're at number 10.
How's that by the stand? How's that by the stand?
That's why it's 2021.
We're in good, we're in a good surplus and that's the end of my personal. I'm, I will be rude, but I just wanna highlight a couple things. Um, if you go straight to the bottom, line number 18, line number 18, 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth column, you'll see 4.8 million dollars as compared to this budget of 4.1 million, which means, and this is the revenue side, we're bringing in more money than we budgeted for. It says a result of two primary things, one are the ARPA grant funds, an amount of 460 dollars, $7,000, and the sales sold at Harvard Church. So from a revenue standpoint, it's capital funds that has created the surplus. Any questions?
None.
I can go over some more, but in the interest of everybody wanting to go home, I'm just skipping up. All right, so, down to expenditures, go to the bottom, uh, next to the last, you'll see that, um, expenditures are projected to come in, and I'm looking at the next to the last column. Expenditures are projected to come in at about 4.1 million. Again, I'm looking at a year-end surplus of about 727,000 dollars. Now, one thing I wanna point out, the projections are only as good as my best estimates or guesses. Um, and this number does not equate to the ARPA grant funds of 460,000 plus a 321, 321,000 for the sale of Souls Harbor Church. It's less than that, which means we're looking at possibly over expended a little bit. Now, whether that be in capital or operations, we are not overspending the entire budget. So we are not in violation of any statute. But again, this is as of June, and it's only a projection. Typically, at year-end, we come in good. We come in with a surplus, at least for the past few years, we've had a surplus, like I'm projecting this year, a surplus, and, um, the departments really watch what they spent in the last quarter. So again, this is only as good as the point in time that I'm presenting to you, but I did wanna point out that it looks like we may overspend. But again, typically, we don't. So I don't want you to be concerned, because the departments know by the reports I give them on a monthly basis, they review them, they look at them, and especially like with office supplies, we're down to wire here. We know we're not gonna go over an office device. We need an extra rainbow paper, we go borrow it. Right, that's better. So I, I wanna give you a level of comfort, even though the numbers do say something a little bit different.
So are you thinking that you might be going over because of the expenses of like the gasoline and the electric going? Things that we couldn't plan?
We didn't budget for over $4 for gasoline.
That's what I was thinking.
And the cost of materials, raw materials. So, but again, department has know how to work their budgets, and they, they're diligent about coming in on the budget. And our, our financials, our year-end financials have reflected that for so many years, I'm not sure how long it's been. So I just, I just wanted to give you that comfort, I see your eyebrows covered.
Now, Jan, what you could really hope, you know, at this point, council struggles with analyzing numbers. So what you could do to really help us, I know there's a lot more you wanna say, if you could give us a summary, maybe, and send it to us?
Sure.
Right?
Sure.
And let us just kinda go through it.
But, and but for the publics.
And then we'll go, then we can, we can rehash it again at the next meeting too.
Oh, okay, so you want me to stop?
No, I'm, I'm just saying, I know you're not gonna feel good if you're saying everything you wanna say.
Oh, no, I'm fine.
So just summarize it for us.
I will.
And then we can go.
I sure will, 'cause I don't want you to be concerned at this point. This is June, we're now in August. Um, the next schedule is reserves, this is something I do present every quarter. If you look at the third column, that's the balance as of June 30, um, you'll see that we have 6.7 million dollars in the bank, currently in the bank. Um, our debt, we have paid as of June 30, 131,250 dollars this year, we budget 175. So our debt service is now down to 1.8 million. Um, and again, that's no interest that we're being charged on that. I can highlight some reserves if you'd like, if not, you can feel free to take a look at them. We are in, in pretty good shape. Sure, I'd love to see us have, you know, tens of millions of dollars in the bank, but that's not our, our life right now. I have arranged with, um, Brandon Bank where we have the majority of our funds on deposit to help us increase our interest earnings over the next year. So I think we're gonna be in, in pretty good shape as far as that goes, especially with interest rates going up. They did make a proposal, and I had talked to them about CDs, because we don't have much money. CDs are, in my opinion, where we need to be. Now, I'm not a financial planner or anything like that, I'm trying to be very concerned with the CD funds. Um, I've arranged with them to, we have one CD for a million dollars right now, that's maturing in September. I have, um, looked at what we could put into more CDs, because I don't know when we're gonna need the money, but they have proposed that they will not turn any penalties if we have to withdraw a burden. So it's a win-win to just take the higher interest rate that CDs provide, and as we need the money, the goal is not to withdraw soon, but, which we haven't had to do with that million-dollar CD for one or two years. But if we absolutely need it, if we do the police department and we need those funds for whatever reason, for example. So, that concludes my very quick presentation. I'm gonna provide the summary as far as the expenses.
Yeah, just summarize over the highlights, and we'd appreciate that. Thank you, all right. Now we're at, um, number 11, council liaison and comments, Ms. Cabbage?
Um, no comments.
Ms. Williams?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Uh, I just have one, I have an appointment, uh, tomorrow to meet with Commissioner Curry. I'm trying to reach out and meet with all the various commissioners one-on-one and just, uh, talk about Dunellen and introduce myself and try to continue to create, um, relationships with, uh, them, so we'll see how that, how that goes. That's my only comment.
Mr. Mayor, due, uh, on Wednesday, I am volunteering at the, um, Stuff on Red, um, at, at, you know, Hallitz, kind of through the TPO and such, um, and there was another, another organization, and I've gotten an email about it, so I will be doing that, Stuff on Red, we won the sign over there on, um, by the, uh, county courthouse in that area, so.
Who sponsors that?
Uh, it's an FDOT thing. It was sent to, it was sent out on, um.
All right.
I'll be doing that on Grand State at 9:30 in the morning.
You have, uh, city attorney comments report?
Uh, yes, mayor, the only thing I have, I heard Mrs. Dunn mention the Florida Redevelopment Association. Um, what I would, what I would state about them, they're similar to the League of Cities and the mains, and some of the resources they offer. My firm represents them. It's a fantastic, they have a fantastic, every year, a, a great, you know, conference resources, um, and goes in line with exactly what we specialize in, green, environmentally friendly redevelopment. And, um, certainly, they have excellent resources, if anybody can attend, I would just say, it's a, it's a really great conference, I'm not providing any, um, any education there this year, I'm not sure if any of my partners are, but every year, it's, it's, it's great. So, that's all I have, I have nothing else to report.
Very good, thank you. Then we have a motion to, oh, oh, yes, we have one more thing from the art.
I forgot to tell you that this was placed, uh, Ms. Jones couldn't make it tonight, so she dropped it off, so please make sure you take this home and.
Thank you.
Read down.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, one thing.
Just wanted to let council know, I forgot to mention it earlier, that DOT, that's, they're redoing the crosswalk here by City Hall, and that project will be starting within the next few weeks to a couple of months. They have finalized everything, selected the contractors, so it could be anytime now that they start construction on the crosswalk.
My instincts are telling me if we're gonna go with a digital sign, it needs to tie in with that project somehow. Just seems like it's a natural place to put it. Brand-new construction, brand-new lights, everything, it just seems like, if you're gonna do something that's high-tech, that's where it would need to be, it just seems that way, but that's my thought, have to look at it. Okay, do we have a motion? Any, anything else?
I already, I already got them.
Motion to term, second, Ms. Williams, thank you. All in perfect.
You're reading her, ma'am.